Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. It's a pleasure having you here today. Let's humble ourselves and pray. Father, we want to thank you for this day. We want to thank you for this very moment. And the people of Mbarara, Lord, we can't thank you enough. King of kings, we commit all our interactions today. Guide our thoughts, our discussions, our deliberations, that everyone will go back happy. Father, we can't do much without you. We trust and believe you among us. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Whoever the Edida, you may get seated. Way to Deputy Governor, represented by Mr. Philip Andrew Wabulia, Executive Director substantively, Petroleum Investment, Management of Bank of Uganda. I be the busy way to Abambara City in the district. I want to in when Abambara City in the district. To Abachi Ramoebali Kuija. Abobuiire, Mksaba Tutanike Program ya itu Nembazo. Kandi Yorubazo Rukubanza. Orukumanyanaka Welcome Remarks. Rugendakova, Nirohe Iwa, Director Communications. Rundi Omukura Kujunani Zivane Bie Mputi Ziganya. Abank of Uganda, Akumanyanaka Dr. Kenneth Egesa. So Mukaira Kamunikirize, Nyete, Dr. Kenneth Egesa. I is a atua Welcome Remarks.
Thank you, MC. Honorable Members of Parliament, the district leaders here, city leaders, our chief guest, the representative of the Deputy Governor, leaders of other regulatory agencies here, management and colleagues of Bank of Uganda, ladies and gentlemen, all protocol observed. Good morning. Good morning. Muri Remta. Trawa Chira. Mwebaro Kuija. Those are the words I know. We started off with the anthem and word of prayer. I wanted to start with a verse from the Bible. It's from Proverbs 21:5. And it goes as, "The plans of the diligent lead to profit, as surely as haste leads to poverty." So from the topics that will come through, you will notice that we really discourage recklessness with finances because it leads to poverty. So you will hear more about that. So mine is to welcome you all. With a heart full of gratitude, I extend the warmest welcome to you all. Thank you so, so much for joining us in this Mbarara Town Hall meeting. Your presence here underscores your commitment to dialogue with us and for the betterment of our community. I especially want to thank Mbarara City and District Leadership for their great partnership with us. Together, we are forging a strong future for our country. And we appreciate the support you have provided in making this happen. Today marks a continuation of our open collaborative journey with the people of Mbarara District and Mbarara City. This journey started in 2016 when the Bank of Uganda prioritized regional town hall meetings. And we have used such forums as a cornerstone for our strategic plan, emphasizing stakeholder engagement, fostering trust, and dispelling misconceptions about our work. So we are not just here to talk, but we are also here to listen to you. I will do a lot of listening and responding to your questions so that you understand what we do and we live here when everybody has a good understanding of the expectations on the other. So your perspectives and experiences that will come through today are expected to shape our policies in our shared pursuit of socioeconomic transformation for Uganda. Let me also mention that the Bank of Uganda's mission is very deeply intertwined with the well-being of every Ugandan. So we seek a solid foundation for our thriving economy and our decisions, informed and guided by our interactions with you, aim to bring about enhanced understanding. So here we want to shed light on the Bank of Uganda's actions and their impact on your lives and well-being. Stronger communication. Here we aim to establish reliable channels between ourselves and you, the community, allowing for swift resolution of challenges. So you'll be hearing about some of the channels we use for resolving challenges that are to do with the financial sector. And thirdly, valuable feedback. Your insights are very essential as we continuously refine our work. And that's why we are not waiting for here at the headquarters. We have come right here to get those insights from you. Our team today is diverse, very dedicated, and includes the top leadership of the bank. So if you look around the team, all the way from the juniors to the top leadership are here and they will be at your disposal. So please make sure that you ask all the questions you'd like us to address. We are also here with CEOs of other reg- CEOs or representatives of other regulatory agencies who we work with closely. These are important partners for us. And they will be available to address questions we may not answer because they are outside our mandate. So if you have questions on the Deposit Protection Fund, on money lenders, on capital markets, we didn't come along alone. We came with with the responsible people who have the answers. So again, I encourage you not to hesitate, but speak out and let your questions be answered. Allow me once again to express our sincere gratitude to Mbarara District and City Leadership for the support and exceptional hospitality. I also want to thank the Deputy Governor and Senior Management and the entire Bank of Uganda team for their efforts towards organizing this event. And of course, most importantly, to all of those, to all of you who are here today, the business community in person and online, the media, financial service providers. I thank you so much for making the time to be here. I thank you for investing your time and energy. And I look forward to listening in on this important conversation. As I conclude, as Nelson Mandela once said, "It always seems impossible until it's done." Let's approach today's discussion with this spirit. Together, let's dialogue, build bridges, and pave the way for a thriving Uganda that we envision. Thank you very much. Mwebari, mnoanga. I will now take this opportunity. It's my pleasure to now invite the Bank Secretary, Bank of Uganda, to make her remarks. Bank Secretary, almost welcome. She's a lady of the soil. So her runya inkore is much, much better than mine. You're most welcome.
Thank you very much, Kenneth. Honorable Members of Parliament, I'm told they are on their way. I actually received a message from the lady MP that should be attending, so we expect them to join us anytime. The RADC, Mbarara City. I think the deputy, this is Canon James Muesijé. The district leadership. We have among us the Deputy Mayor, her worship, Priscam Muganzi. The religious leaders present. All leaders in your respective capacities. I also want to recognize Mr. Patrick Ezaga, who is representing the CEO of the Deposit Protection Fund. The Media Fraternity, management and colleagues from Bank of Uganda. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Suzanne Kanyemibwa. I want to believe that name is so familiar. Kanyemibwa. Mudi Remta, Abanyambara. And indeed, like he mentioned, my runya inkore is a little bit better than his. It's always a pleasure to be back home. Thank you so much, Mbarara City, and everyone here for your warm welcome. Mwenintake yonjiireyo. Na nyenda ngumbeyanjure kachana nabagambi Ramazina and Suzanne Kanyemibwa. Nywenka kuruma rimbara, baraniye anyoriri. Nkakuraboma. Hazan kashomera Munispo School. Na yonjerayona zamerahill, where I studied, in kashomera merahille, miaka mukaga. Six uninterrupted years. So I'm very proud of Mbarara as a city, but also the schools that made me who I am. As the Uganda Central Bank, we believe in connecting directly with the people we serve. As you'll notice, our revised mission of promoting price stability and a sound financial system to support socioeconomic transformation cannot be achieved without understanding the needs of a people that we serve and sharing our work to see how our work at the Central Bank affects, impacts you. Today's Town Hall meeting builds on this commitment. So like, Kenneth, okuyaya gambri, we are here to explain to you who we are, what we do, but most importantly, we want to listen and learn from you. The Bank of Uganda has several objectives for this stakeholder engagement. This is going to be a two days engagement. And this is not the first time, by the way, we are holding these engagements. We have been across almost all regions in the country. So one of the reasons, like I want to say, objectives is to explain our role. How do we support price stability? Abakogubariyaha, echechubuzo, nmbzakucheh, muamochinechomucheresom, omuami Dr. Adam Mogumengugu. Njeraba mwenumbanimoreba physical era, mwenimoreba TV. Ebbebe intepikwati nene price stability, ngugu. Ornyankore na rumanyaje. Ogomo ami, as we record. So we also want to share with you how we supervise financial institutions and how we manage our payment systems. Understanding this helps you make informed decisions. The second objective, to ride on what Kenneth had said, is to gather feedback from you. So your suggestions directly shape how we improve our policies and communication for a better results. The third objective for this Town Hall is to promote collaboration. As a central bank, we partner with other regulators in the sector. I've already introduced Patrick here from the Deposit Protection Fund. Uganda Microfinance Regulatory Authority, they are also represented here. So together with this team, we strengthen our financial system and also protect your interests. As earlier mentioned, our key speaker today is Mr. Philip Andrew Wabulia. He's substantially the Executive Director, Petroleum Investment Fund. However, today is here to represent the Deputy Governor. Thank you so much, Philip, for finding time to come and engage with the people of the city. And beyond, by the way, we have the city and the catchment area. We are here to answer your questions. The team that you see here putting on the t-shirts like mine are here from different departments of the bank to answer any question that you might have. So let me, however, say a few things about Bank of Uganda and other works that we do beyond monetary policy. We have community development passion. We do mind so much about the society in which we operate. So beyond our core work, Bank of Uganda is dedicated to giving back to communities. And this is through our corporate social responsibility initiatives. And I happen to head that initiative of CSR. A case in point, those who recall, in 2019, we partnered with the district, Mbarara District Leadership, to renovate and equip the Wiswera Health Centre for. That was in 2019 before COVID. And I'm told, actually, we had an M and E. I'm told the number of patients, actually, now they call them clients, the number of clients that visit that health centre is enormous. So I think it was a good thing that we went that way. And it's not only in Mbarara that we have been. We have been in all the districts where the Bank of Uganda has a presence and beyond. And we are still doing that good work. So our target is mother, women and children health care. So we have renovated, we have built, we have equipped maternity wards and in your dental care in several districts in the country. And you'll be hearing about financial inclusion. So I, we say that we cannot start preaching financial inclusion in a society that is unhealthy. So for us, a healthy society is at the forefront or as a precursor for our financial inclusion. Not because I'm a woman, let me give a disclaimer here. But women, we all know, are mothers of the nation and children are our future. So if we are able to hold on to those two, then I'm sure we have a good and healthy future going forward. The second area is the, what we, the ESG principles. We are promoting the environmental, social, and governance among financial institutions. This means encouraging responsible lending that supports sustainable businesses and ensures our financial system benefits everyone. For the financial institutions representatives here, you know it very well that ESG is on the agenda. Then feedback, and then our branch. We all know where our Bank of Uganda branch is, in Mbarara. Our commitment to you as the central bank doesn't end with these particular meetings or engagement. We genuinely want your feedback to make these engagements even more valuable. After this session, our Bank of Uganda staff will be distributing a short questionnaire. Please take a moment to share your honest thoughts. It will help us better understand your needs and improve our future events. Speaking of valuable resources, I would like to highlight our Bank of Uganda branch here in Mbarara City. Not only does it serve commercial banks, by the way, in the catchment area. This branch is supposed to serve all of us. Our dedicated team offers a range of services, including currency exchange, information on government programs, and assistance with any questions of concern that you may have on the sector. Please feel free to walk into that building. Don't hesitate to visit the branch. I think they will introduce the branch manager when he comes and take advantage of the expertise available to answer your questions. Once again, thank you very much for your time. Thank you for listening to me. And working together, we can create a stable economy and a sound financial system that serves not only Mbarara, but beyond Mbarara and the country at large. I thank you. Just a moment for the MC. I will not leave this until he comes and I hand over this microphone. Mr. MC, I am done with greeting the people of Mbarara. So you come and take over your mantle. You want me to invite the, oh. You see, that's the reason why I didn't want to leave. Otherwise, I would have missed the honour of inviting the representative of the Deputy Governor, Mr. Philip Wabulia, to come and greet the people and say something. It's my honour, Philip. You are, you will excuse me for us at the bank, we refer to ourselves with the first names. So when you hear me call him Philip, don't think I'm not respecting his big shoes that he's putting on. But he knows deep inside that I do respect him for representing my boss. Philip, sir, come and speak to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Before I speak to you, you know you respect your elders. So I'm just going to ask for my senior to just say hello to you. Mr. Dr. Adam Mogume, please say hello.
Abanyambara, muri reji. Na manyetama zinagandene Adam Mogume. Suzanne, abajira ngu, no manyambara, na nyonyo manyambara. Mkashomera primary, yoku bananpakaya kataano, Mbarara Munispo School. Sabasaba yastera. Sabasaba yanshaanjuna mwenenda. Yastera yatugungo mrumbarara. Echamshaanjuna cherezabusheni. So, hatu nawagambera sabasaba. Hatu njiramama nyama, naankayamia kaya. So, we nawagamungu, kanyamchakataano, shanjuna mwenenda. Arifma isangunkuzre. Ndidi romo nyomuiji, ndidi nenyamanyi. Mwebari mnoanga.
Adam, mwebari mnoanga. I've been trying to practice how to greet, but by the time I finish, I'm sure I'll know how to greet. Members of Parliament present, religious leaders, resident district commissioner, the RACC, Deputy Mayor of Mbarara. I'm happy to see that's a lady. Eh, we should give her a hand clap, you know? The representative from DPS, DPF, Deposit Protection Fund. So when we close banks, these are the people who have to pay you. So you should stand up and they recognize you. Thank you very much. Leaders from the Ankole Subregion, representatives of financial institutions, business community present, residents of Mbarara and beyond, and the Bank of Uganda staff, distinguished participants, ladies and gentlemen. Agandi. You see, I told you I would try and get there. In my speech, allow me, I'll speak English and Luganda if there are some people who can't speak English. Is that fair? Is it acceptable? Very well, because I want to make sure everyone can understand. First, I want to thank the leaders and the people of Mbarara for honoring our invitation. You know, when you look behind, the whole place is filled. Thank you very much. Mwebari nyo, mwebari darokoja. And welcoming Bank of Uganda. I feel so welcome. Since yesterday, I've been trying to practice some runya inkore and everyone keeps laughing. You know, in the hotel, you tell them wa shee shehere, they all laugh. But by the time I finish, I will know something. So I remember that during our previous Town Hall, something similar to this, in 2016. Mo 2016 twaliwano. Avantu wembala nebatugamba, Bank of Uganda mutulakampala, temujatulaba. And the late governor, may his soul rest in peace, said, "We should do this again across the country." So you were the mother of this idea of Town Halls. Thank you very much, Mbarara. We use these Town Halls gathering to tell stakeholders about our work and its impact. And we also use it to receive questions and feedback, like my colleague Suzanne has said. So your questions and comments today. Ebivuzo, nebimo agalo okumanya, tuagala nyo okumanya. Inti, tuulidiza. Tuawurza. I'm going, by the time I leave tomorrow, I'll be speaking runya inkore very clearly. And the role of Bank of Uganda in socio-economic change. I've been trying to get it in runya inkore. I, I'm still challenging you people. I want a word in runya inkore which means socio-economic change. So abamanyo Luganda, maybe oluzungo lubakalo visa. Socio, bo buntu, nandigambie, ebiyavuli jo, embeda zavantu. Economic, yenfuna. Now, I'm trying to challenge people from here to get a word in runya inkore which means socio-economic change. So we want to continue these engagements to strengthen Mbarara District's people's leadership. Remember twata ndikirawanu, in 2016, we started from here in Mbarara, which is very interesting. So as I discuss why we're here today, twachi tuliwano, I want to explain the obligations of Bank of Uganda. Obligations chitegeza, che mutusuwiramu, atama teka gegagamba, che tuino kola. As central bank, our ultimate goal is to positively impact Uganda's vision, 2020, 2040, which states to transform Uganda from a predominantly peasant and low-income country to a competitive upper-middle income class. I will start this session by highlighting some of Bank of Uganda's work to encourage us. Kugamba nemutubuza, nemukomplaininga, netuulida. So temutya, please do not be withheld with the speech that I'm giving. I want to hear- I want to hear today some of these things. And get questions and answers. So, we know that prices increase rapidly, okay? When demand for goods and services rises. So today, the two guys are breaking down, okay? Prices rises quickly when demand for goods and services rises, as we saw in 2022. So, the Bank of Uganda, what does it do? It manages the money in circulation. In what we do, we are controlling the borrowing costs. So eda, bank of Uganda, we have released money. So, in songa, this is the change in prices, don't change much. This is, so, if all of us here received 1 million in the pockets. So that is an example, Bank of Uganda controlling, for example, last week, Bank of Uganda, if all of us here received 1 million in the pockets. Which is, last week, why no one makes money? So, for last week, we increased the central bank rate from 9.5% to 10%. This was largely because of that depreciation of the shilling that we saw. So, why did we do that? If we did not intervene, especially when you saw this shilling going. So, if you have a phone, it's 3,700. Last week, we called 3,700. So, if you have a phone, it's 3,700. So, this was partially caused by the currency has gone to 3,950. It was one of those reasons. Strong domestic demand, partly by customers buying and panicking, okay? If this continues and we didn't do anything, it means the changes in prices will continue. If they continue, it means our target of 5%, we shall not achieve it. Which means, ensure you go to the market to buy a matoke. Today it was 10,000, tomorrow it is 10,500. The next day it's 10,600. So that's one of the reasons why you saw us coming to the market. So, we are recognizing that in this process, some of us will feel pain. So, we are recognizing that in this process, some of us will feel pain. Some of you, those rates are too high, you're killing my business. But I want to give you an example. When you fall sick of malaria, they have to do what? They inject you a little bit and you feel a little bit pain. That is what we have done. So we recognize that the economic recovery is still slow, okay? And that rising this central bank rate may have short-term negative interest rates. Bear with us. And you find the prices that are what? Are higher. So, but, over time. Prices are not increasing, we want them to stabilize. So, high inflation rates, changes, hurt the economy. Now we, so that's what we did. Another role of central bank is to be transparent and communicate and help policy people. You understanding? Many times, people come to Bank of Uganda, and I have had cases where people don't know that have paid for my loan. I borrowed 10 million, I paid 10 million, they have refused to give me my title. Transparency, communication. Maybe he didn't understand that he has to pay interest on that loan. So many times, one of our roles is to be transparent. And many times, even these banks can decide to misbehave. You come to us, we'll definitely help you. I'll tell you a story of a gentleman we helped. Bank of Uganda will work hard to keep price increases low and stable and reflective of the economic value. So we know your salary doesn't change, okay? So let's be clear about that. But if we allow the prices to just keep on up and down, we all will find it hard to live. So now that I've explained the role of Bank of Uganda, let me tell you what Bank of Uganda does as its duties. Some of you might not know what Bank of Uganda does. So, Bank of Uganda licenses and regulates and supervises financial institutions. Let me explain. So, institutions, commercial banks, credit institutions. Listen very carefully. Microfinance deposit-taking institutions. There are certain microfinance institutions which are not deposit-taking. They are not under Bank of Uganda. So I repeat, microfinance deposit-taking institutions. Bank of Uganda, Forex bureaus. Credit reference bureaus, large circles. Yesterday, I arrived in Mbarara and I'm happy to say, you have the largest number of circles, which is very good. Congratulations to you. And others, to ensure that we meet the minimum requirement. What else does Bank of Uganda do? Bank of Uganda also promotes a reduction in financial crime. One time, an institution went to a border town and opened up a bank. He just said "bank", and started collecting people's money. And no one asked him. But people kept depositing and withdrawing. He said, "I have a bank." What happened? One morning, and the people have closed the shop and what? And have gone. We ensure that anyone who calls himself a bank, so don't wake up and say, "I'm Tumusime Bank", and you think you can start doing banking business, nope, you can't. Okay? Thank you. And also, Bank of Uganda also looks at consumer protection and requires treatment of customers fairly. So if you come to us and you complain that a financial institution has mistreated you, we will listen and we have a complaints handling desk at Bank of Uganda. Bank of Uganda also regularly inspects banks to ensure that there is professionalism. You remember, there is one bank we have recently closed. Some of you might not know. I'll ask the question to one of you and you see. So we check if a bank has sufficient capital and liquidity. That's one of the roles of the bank. In the event of the bank not having those requirements, we call it a bank failure. We protect depositors. We work with the gentleman here who keeps your money. So we don't want to cook and also decide whether the food is sweet. We give it to him. Bank of Uganda also has a role it plays in the national payment systems. Mobile money? Yeah? So, we call it mobile money, Airtel, mobile money, MTN. If you're doing any business that is relating to money, remember, the National Payment Systems Act mandated Bank of Uganda to regulate and supervise. Why? You remember this D3? You give me 1,000 dollars, after two weeks, I give you 2,000 or 200 dollars. Please question. I'm telling you, question. Ask them, "Where is your Bank of Uganda license?" Okay? Payment systems link between buyers and sellers. So don't lose your money. These products are to all of you customers and available, alright? And you should not be ashamed or scared to look at them. And there is a famous word I've been practicing in Ruyangkori. They say, "You don't need to cover yourself at dawn." Okay? So let me pronounce it in Ruyangkori. So I've told you, so you don't misunderstand me if I mispronounce. What I'm saying is, you do not need to cover yourself at dawn. Now you can see, you can correct me, alright? So please, don't be ashamed. We warn institutions, okay? We warn institutions, agents and clients to be aware of electronic fraud. People, and I say it again, about your information on the phone. If you receive a suspicious mail and it tells you, "Mr. Twiney, you've won 1 million dollars", click here to claim. Please don't. And today, we are here, we will educate you, okay? Also, use a strong password. If I told all of you to stand up and we check your phones, some of you don't have even passwords on the phone. Others have a simple password, 12345. Please use strong passwords. And also, you can have a system whereby if you want to withdraw your money, you send a request to the bank on your phone, they send you a code that you have to enter. Those are strong passwords and multi-factor passwords. So, why am I telling you this? You should not be scared to use your phone. So you cannot say, "I cannot..." You won't come and say, "I'm failing to sleep because I'm scared of dreaming." You see? You can't say, "I'm not going to use the phone." So I'm trying to get most of these things. So please, members, try as much as possible. So, the Uganda shilling is a legal tender. And Bank of Uganda has the only right. You won't find Mr. Wabuya saying, "I'm issuing shillings," okay? So any money, it's only Bank of Uganda. I have seen some people creating pictures, no go, these young boys, they go on the computer, they create, and they say Uganda has issued 100,000 what? Shilling. You go and read the law. If Bank of Uganda catches you, you're going to go for 25 years into prison, okay? We've seen people putting money like flowers. How do they say you love the lady in Ruyangkori? And you put those things on the sticks and you take the thing. If you're caught, Bank of Uganda, because you're destroying the currency. So it's only us who can. We have been fighting a problem. We also maintain clean note policy. And ladies, please don't take this offensively. You know, when you go to the market, there are some people, after they have got the money, they wrinkle it and they put it in their chest. I will avoid using the word I should use. So they put it in their chest. That money, which you squeeze, tomorrow when we bring it to count on the machine, it cannot work. You know why? Because it is wrinkled. There are others who are very smart. They get the money, they put it under the bed on the floor, and they keep it. When he goes and looks at it, he says, "Oh, nah, this money is spoiled." Don't throw it away. Bring it to us, we shall exchange it, okay? But we encourage you But we encourage you to maintain a clean note policy and ensure that the money is clean. But Bank of Uganda also does something interesting. We want you to try and reduce the use of money, of cash. You've seen people being robbed. So we are encouraging you to use mobile money. Use mobile money. Don't carry millions to Kampala. Okay? Thank you very much. Don't carry. Reduce also the cost. You know, if I today gave my gentleman here 50 million in cash and I told him now go to Mbarara city, he'll have a problem. He has to get a bag, he has to get a guard. We are saying, use electronic money. Ladies and gentlemen, the Bank of Uganda also administers governments development projects. This is the most topic I know you're going to ask me about. Agriculture credit facility, the Small Business Recovery Fund and other funds. The SCF provides affordable medium and long-term funding for value-added agriculture products like agro-processing and grain trade to transform agriculture in the economy. The Uganda Development Bank, commercial banks, microfinance deposit-taking and credit institutions are what we call participating financial institutions in giving out this agriculture credit facility. So, we as Bank of Uganda encourage these participating financial institutions to give out this agriculture credit facility of loans below market. I think the last I recorded, it was at 12%. As of September, the cumulative SCF disbursements totaled 840 billion. Abatute sente mu agriculture credit facility in the whole country totaled 840 billion. Up from 21 billion in 2010. This is the most interesting part and you should clap for yourself. The Western Region received 162 billion, which was 22%. Well done, Mbarara and the Greater Western Region. You also had the most beneficiaries. which was almost 40% of those people. And the block allocation uptake was 10 billion. You've done so well, Mbarara. Well done. Some of you are not clapping for SCF. Obogalo. You want someone else to clap? Thank you very much. The block allocation, omugabo muneni, provides micro and smallholder farmers with access to finance by allowing them to use alternative collateral like movable property, inventories and credit histories. The category now includes cattle restocking. Before, it was not including cattle restocking. Now it includes cattle for dairy and beef production, and poultry farming and agriculture. I would also like to recognize before the presence of Dorin Makumi. She's Director of Communication from the National Bank of Rwanda. Do you want to stand up and? Thank you. I would also like to recognize a senior officer of National Bank of Rwanda, Karimera Bob Allen. Please stand. You're most welcome. Thank you. So despite its growing popularity, the agriculture credit facility has not yet reached its potential due to several factors. And these are one of them, and you can include others. Limited financial literacy. But ononyo, abamanyo, you said, you can go to your bank and tell them, "I want to access agriculture credit facility." We also have people who have inadequate sensitization of credit officers, people who are sitting in those banks, and some of them really don't know what it is all about. We also have those people who want to receive and they don't know what to do. Then this is the interesting one. We have some people in these participating financial banks with limited lending under this facility. So some of you might not know how it works. So agriculture credit facility, the government gives 50% and the financial institution also gives 50%. And once we have a loss, the government has undertaken to take up that loss. But many times, emirundi emenji, tula abantunga batia. Agamba, you first borrow mine. It defeats logic. If I'm going to share with you the risk, why would I lend you all? But it's the most interesting one. So, this disadvantages some of you and we are aware of it. And we also have something called inadequate public information in rural areas on this. But we are not sitting. We are actually, we are actually addressing this issue. Togirana banks, both the participating banks and intended beneficiaries like you now, we are telling you, sente zee. How do they say it in Ruyan Kori? The money is there. Ziruo. Senta ziruo. Yeah, senta ziruo. The basoga, I think, says sente diduo. The Bank of Uganda is reviewing the agriculture credit facility operations and engaging the top management of the participating banks. Ladies and gentlemen, we also meet these banks and we have been having meetings to review their internal credit policies. Kwegamba kwebawo eda. We are also talking to them. And allow access to affordable financing under the agriculture credit facility. The Bank of Uganda is actually doing something. We are trying to lift the restrictions on the SCF lending in some branches and regions and ensuring that there is information that is communicated. Bank of Uganda is also promoting the SCF nationwide, through radio talk shows. I think you've heard my colleagues, Kenneth, and we have been very active. Since many people in Angkoli subregion are agriculturalists and cattle keeping is the main economic activity here. You know, they used to talk about a cow called Rugaj. So I'm going to try and see it before I go. I don't know whether I'll find it. It's somewhere here. Igongo. I will go to Igongo and see it. So, it's very interesting that we urge Mbarara city leaders to modernize, to continue to modernize. You have modernized, but you continue to modernize agriculture and promote value-adding projects to move our people from subsistence. You know, the president always says what? Chidachoonka? Yeah? So that we don't produce to eat. We produce to sell and live, to commercial economy. We also encourage players in the agriculture sector to apply for loans. And Bank of Uganda, through Bank of Uganda regulated institutions, I repeat, borrow loans from Bank of Uganda regulated people. Why am I saying that? Money lenders, we have a lot of questions. You know, there is a famous saying, "A hen only picks and eats what it can swallow." In Ruyan Kori, they say, "Enkoko ne shonda..." You have completed it for me. That was the thing which I've been. So thank you very much. That's very good. So, the Bank of Uganda also administers what we call Small Business Recovery Fund. In 2021, to help small businesses that suffered financial distress during COVID, the government set up what we call the Small Business Recovery Fund. And so far, we, like the SCF, it can be accessed through supervised financial institutions. Loan disbursements under this fund have been 10.5 billion as of June 2023. I mean, they have rose from 10 billion to 16 billion as of September 2023. So, we have also a memorandum of understanding amendment that removed some restrictions. Some of you, I know you're going to ask. I tried to apply and failed. But as in September, there are some restrictions that have been removed on the fund uptake and Bank of Uganda is continuing to get your feedback. The Western Area again carries the flag, has used 2.4 billion. Well done. Into financing 201 small and medium enterprises and while 972 retail trade SMEs, which received 10.7 billion of the 16. So you can see you're doing very well. Yes, thank you very much. Obogalo. Bank of Uganda in collaboration with Minister of Finance held workshops in Mbarara in April this year, last year, sorry, to educate businesses in the Western and Southern Western Region about the Small Business Recovery Fund. I hope. So in conclusion, I hope this overview of Bank of Uganda has been of benefit and helpful and I hope we've all understood. Those who understand English, abamanyo lizungu nava, abalumanyene inga tebagala duogira. Let's put it in that way. I deeply value these opportunities. Intimuziwanu, motuwé, feedback and dialogue. And I look forward to your questions and answers. Let's continue working together to build a strong and more prosperous Uganda. But before I end, I would like us to stand and in memory of our late governor, Professor Motwebide. And just a minute of silence. We remember him for the great work he has done. May his soul rest in eternal peace. Please, you may be seated. Thank you very much, people of Mbarara. Many thanks for your time. Mwebadi munonga, twasima. Thank you very much.
Obogaro, wa deputy governor's representative. Bueni agambaji. Eh, vasebu nanyabo. Azatuyun tutambraje na program ya yitu. Ah, so far, speeches, twasheza. Buen tubuzayesa district leaders, which will do, city leaders, which will do towards the end. Ah, it is over. Aba mc turi babidi. Nyewe Robert Wagonza. Hamnam jenzuwa njee. Paul Wembabazi. Ah, itu nantumanyo ruyakitara, koka Paul Wena manyaru Ruyan Kori. So, awensongeji Paul nazakuti yamba. Ah, quinra, tekebe ebiti agamba, ombor Ruyan Kori. Owagonza will stick to Ruyanoro for now. So Paul, please come over and translate for the people of Mbarara.
Mwebadi munonga, Owagonza, ombor Ruyanoro. Ah, muriri mutabanyo Mbarara. Amazina ni Paulo Wembabazi, ninzalwaru kuindiri. Kamparan kaza, Bank of Uganda, amara kumpu murumu. Nkani, manyaru kuindiri, koma Mbarra. So Bank of Uganda, nyo yantwire kampara. Okay. Aba, abebembesi vituwa jezo. Yiriyari kugamba, omuruyan kori, kugamba, omuruganda. Konketsi andeta nokuvasa, keteriza, tchewo, tokuvasa, kubota yete jerezaji. Really. Director of Communication, nweyagavandese, weyata ndakanabiburi, yatshomera, ombiburi. Konketsi yamara yatjerajen, sanukujera ngusente van tumwe, tuzukwateji. Yera yatjerangu charita Bank of Uganda, hanu chimomurigeviu. Nuktuwegi sangusente zetu, tuzukwateji. Yamara yasima, puyamaraya sima, aba, aba ridas. Abebe mbesi wambarabona, ukwata nasokteve kanasa, omukuru. Yatjerangu, eh, meetings in case, zikata ndekinku mibiruni, kuminamukaga. Azat yajangu zikata ndicharambarra. Zikata ndicharambarra. Yajangu, chturi serehanuya, chturi serehanuya. Nukurra, nokuriza imwe, mutugambira, mukumanyar Bank of Uganda. Mbuze byone, mukunduenda, deero banka, aba, 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 abebembesi wabanka, aba garukimu. Yatjerangu variya, aba banka, vinahua, apata nava DPF, nawandi. Mwen, nayajangu nayaka, kasangubona variya. Nabazaga, kame buze, vitu byone, ebitu kundaku buze. Hagaruka, huvank sekretari, Suzani, tikuma nyewa, yewe yanshimewa, kubuka, awikuiwa, gamba, omuruyan kori, yiriyari. Eh? Suzan, weyagamba, omuruyan kori, yiriyaru, amerehiru hanu. Yatjerangu, kashomera, amerehiru yiriyari, yagamba, omuruyan kori. Konkana, weyana, yonje se rezachi director of communication, yatu gambira. Ya, nawe yatjerangu cha tureta, nituendangu, abantu wambarara, bamanye, omukashogwa Bank of Uganda, omuihangi. Ntuchamanechi yava nagamba. Yagam, yashoborohobiche, na deputy governor, yonjeru, heavyindi. Ya, kandi yamara yatjerangu, ebiti Bank of Uganda, erukora. Nukugaruzavant. Na yene ukwata kasete, akikube yine, egaruzavant omukumini tena. Bueni yajangu, munkumibiruni, kuminamueni. Bakija, aba garukamiru warro, eriankahe, eriyawuiswirha hanu. Varugarukambarabona za, vatika, muneviu kodes. Wanjii. Konkaya yatjerangu, nebafamu nunga ngu, abana, nava kazie, bafunu, hereso. Abakowey yatjerangu, abana, nava kazie, aba riji, ihangando, aba riji. Eh? Abashisha, mwa yatjerangu timu. Abashira, ntujendera you. Yes? Okay, then deputy governor, yagak, bank sekretari, yamara yatjerangu, tui ne branch hanui, yachigambahu. Ngobunu mamui, ne mukundaku buze, ebitu shovire. Kandu takuvasa, pijendaku zakampara. Yiriyari yajangu, kaha branchaha. Uwara, ashangu, mubuzi, ashinkuena, kugambira. Eh, na khaansai, chitichao, chokuende, chukwati, ina Bank of Uganda. Deputy Governor, I have seen you have landed in Ruyan Kori. In one day. So if you can take a week, yaza yatugamburu Ruyan Kori, yamweni yatramusimuru Ruyan Kori. Ifu mungazu, ruzi, anateresa Ruyan Kori? Yes? Yeah? Yechi, yabebe mbesi wona, kandi yaba simu. Ahaboku ija, ahamukuru, ogweli zo. Ah, yatjerangu, nawe yonje lesangu, chimunguhabia Bank of Uganda, ebiti kora. Nukorewe, kangu vision, twenty forty, echijendraga, tya Uganda, eten kumibiri, namakumiana. Ukuiha Uganda, mboro, bakajitahre, ngoro, kujera ngu, yumaini makasete. Yajaru, Bank of Uganda. Sorry, very sorry. Someone can come and assist? Kamparatari, mbehu keji, kuya, eje mbehu ne yambarre, nakavihu, kare fresh? Eh? Okay. So yatjerangu, Uganda, ne playinga, luru mpango, ne koru, ne jeso kurewe kangu. Twaza, kusinku mibiru, namakumiana. Abantu wanda, Uganda, tva chururo, vinema kasete. Yamara yatjerangu, ebyuno, bakuaraba, kura, bakuarabamu, kurewe kangu, sete, zitesu, tinu mushahu, omutuaru, guanja, gwerizo ba. Na yinchakare, nukuingana, ngachi, komutuaru. Ntuya yajangu, nukontrollinga information. Controlling information, ngu wazo, mukatari, echtojekchiache, nchuguru, mutoare, erizo ba, nawazo, ngaku, uguruku ija, ne, nangosha, ngichi, tuchichi, chugurashiri nji, omutuaru. So Bank of Uganda, ne jeso kureka, ngutuwa, zamukatari, erizo, kashanga, chigumutuaru, inchakare, chugurune, chueku, gundi. Mwen, nva jeso kureka, ngusente za, gumazine, omuhendo, guazon, kushimiwa, guri. Nihi kheza, haboku, ndebi yagamba, omuruyan kori, niyendani, niyugurukeviu. Yamara yatjerangu, chiindi. Ngu Bank of Uganda, ne gaba license. Niheru kheza, licensei. Zokuichirza, za banka. Zokuichirza za banka, ezidiumu ihangariyoni, okora. Za banka antuzu manye, za standby, za centenary za. So, yajangu, buri banka yone yu zako rumu ihangiri, eshimekuene we yine, raisensi, erukurgo Bank of Uganda. Kandi ya tu gambirahu, na ngoya zuchamo mbichweka, yajera ngu haro za, za banki impango, ezia yata tiya wa nu. Yajanguru za banki za zarwa gatenche, yagaruka yajera ngu ntireza raisensi, za forex bureau, zumurmba raram forex bureau. Eh? Ezukwan se sente, warete dora za we, bakue, eh, sente za Uganda, ezza Uganda bakue dora. Ezo na eshimekazwa zine raisensi, erukurgo Bank of Uganda. Yamara yatu gambirangu, arizwa kweita create reference bureaus, muneza financial card. Ezaven zigabezo, konkaha va dehatu bakaviya wa, tenwa yajangui, inindanga montu yawi, no shinkano, jutuwa stiro kafunaroni yawe, otatwire financial card. Konkaha, ebitongo reviu, ebine raisensi, yukureweka ngu yaguma mbitu reva, yavatu inemi chume rujomo kushashore sentezitu za ronisitukwati hireyu. So, na ni, ebitongo reviu, nabiu, raisensi mbijihu Bank of Uganda, deroya yajanguna za sakwimpango. Kandi yasi maba nyambarra, yajanguwa chirikuni yarevo, yine za sakoninyi njumunga, ah, otwe terenumunga. Na abekuza, za sakwimpango zona, ezza kuziri. Ntushimekwan zifana raisensi, kurgo Bank of Uganda yajera ngu, ebere judiwe ya sakwazareze kura ba ho. So, za tanchele kua pura yengangusifana raisensi. Yajera ngu, echindu zamara kufana raisensi, aba Bank of Uganda stiro ne guma ne zeteka herishu. Ne guma ne zreva, kureweka ngusente zitesu tuateka yo, za guma zridji. Kureweka nguewa fana yaroni, tuwa akutekanis, okuma ichirza angine, ngojokushura roni yawi, nokuwajitashura, tuwa yehindu. Mwen, Bank of Uganda, ne guma ne ija, ne, ne chevera za banka, ezoya ba nuzukora, krujirankebera jereva ziteyungu zukore, okuvidi. Yatu jera ngu harho, haro nenndi je itukweta national payment systems, national payment yagamba mobile money. Na ora yagamba, azaya, yajera ngutugmentu kusa mobile money mnonga, turekukujinan tuekor sente. Deroya yajangu MTNI, yajang, MTN mobile money, yajera ngu, eya teru, ezozona zine raisensi zukurugankahi, omBank of Uganda. Echiya emphasizinga yajera ngu, aba antuwon, aba kudiringa, nokuata ha sentezaba nya Uganda. Ba shimekwan ba bisha, bakafana raisensi kurugankahi, omBank of Uganda. Kandi yahabravantu, yajera ngu, waza guma no zakuji, ayu waza kuzi, oriwa kujati, atinimbika sente, ni, ni nguza sente. Yajera ngu reweke ngua ujutukonkashkuena yajangu no, no tujichira sente, raisensi yawerukurgo Bank of Uganda, edinkahe. Echiya habravanya mbarangu, mukume muchubuze, abaku baharma vanda, barukora batine raisensi, batarakuma. Okay. Ah, un, unmu shuka yajangu, tijuka kuesuke kabwajeshiri. Eh? Otijuka kuesuke kabwajiderechi, kabwajeshiri. Ngoro fumuri yatu chera, omoronya angkora ho. Azaya nama nyisahu, ngumareke guma nujenda, ngutukazomu omuwatine raisensi. Actually, yajera ngu, tuantu ndakufana karoni, tujienomo omubankesi zine raisensi, turekekuzomba manerenda. Manerenda kura variya hunsaasiri, yakateri nakaguisa. Yajera nguturekekuma ntsumba manerenda, abaku batuvaru juditedi, kandi ziri za bankesi ndi, ezine raisensi, zinabakuzireva yuguru kureweka ngutuza, tza tuwa zakubi. Ya tu gambira, ah, electronic crime, kuiya kuiya amara tu gambirangu haru mobile money, yajangusente tustambra za mobile money. Azaya janguturekekutina kusa mobile money, konkaya jang, ntoka tina kose sumu yau. Toktina kubi yama ngo tajera chi, ngo tarot, na ngo buinu fumu, the, our DJ has got those problems. So the phones are here, ziriyahan ezokozesa, kanturazee hakane tso kuzokozes. Konkaya jangutureweke ngutuwa zukoe saji, yahabrangu brigeomashimekuene ka password. Password mujumanya, na ngo kuno tujeta pin. Eh? Pin, yaza yajangu pin ya, okumoteke mpino, yukureweka ngue gumele te yanguhi, ngo montunawa sakujitebelezi. Nene yamara yajanguturekekuma ntugabana za pin, na mwen, ndokuzama mobile money, nchikayi ohoa mobile money, niraka sente kandjaka. Ucheza, atpin, otora, omohereso, utpini, ikumi, chenda nitan, ojumugambroa mobile money. Ogumanyango wajimugambresente za ozona wajera chi, wasugaba. Abakua kueyajima nyaa, akasumu yaki bazona nsijen. Mwen ya jangutureke ngutaguan teka, eh, nteteka mpini yitu, egumere, ewumundata kuvasa kutebelezi za juva juva. Kandi yamara yajera, nguturekekijigaba, pin eneri ya ohwenga. Yajera ngu, Bank of Uganda chi ndi, niyo institutioni yonka niyo, eh, inobshovorozii, obokore sente. Esente zonesu twineza handichireho Bank of whati, Bank of Uganda, niyo yonke inobshovorozii, obokore sente. Kana necha kandi, kureweka nguseti, za guma zige sete zuboniri. Esete zuboniri. Yaha example, yaba kuzivika ankahi, abakuziviko mukarega, abakaza wakuziviko mukarega. Ari omukataro rukuma ra kuguza ebesa ne yamaanda, deno kazivika ah, zyamanda. Echiyo tchumachi masa ngueze sete, tza chirikirino waza kuzariki muto ma, tza garuka kura ba mezonsi bazafu, mikaku yatu shovor. Mwen ya jangutureke ngune sete, tuaguma ntsukwataji, za guma zuboniri. Tuzivikeji. Konkaya janguka, noku laozinese zasiskiri, esete zasiskiri, ezuchwechireho. Ezokure munindu mwen, noschireza zona, ojende hariya banka, Bank of Uganda hariya mbarara. Ojete naritimitori yanjikume zezubonire, ni nyende zuboniri. Yajangu Bank of Uganda, shimekuene kha esentense, warete sente kureze zguazishiskiri. Yagaruka yonje ra hongu Bank of Uganda, eh, ineyo, eh, vindebye kherezu, na mwen, unanintahu, muna horajua chigamba ho. Yajangu nyonija kuresete za, za agurkarcha. Yachigamba hongu, reseza agurkarcha credit fund. Eh? Esete zava hingi, unanintahu, mu hinowa chigamba, tnyuchi ni sano kureza va hingizonka. Hanu yaharuri je kugamba, um, 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 indetail, eda chica bazumbazumteha program. Konka deputy governor yajera ngu, na waheseta va hingi, kandi yasi maba nyambarra, ngoba mu machuma nyire. Ngua sentezwa hiromo Uganda yon, pasenta nanishatu, zjiru moestani. Echikuma sangu ntuzokosa kuru njumunga. Yajera ngu aba anturukumi, na vena, chenda nava shatu, kurgo moestani, va bugina sente za agurkarcha credit fund. Yajera ngu, esente za agurkarcha credit fund, na zuma nyango, nzo zukusenga yu kujira. Amagoba machi kusenga yu, pasenti ikumi niwiri, omaka gwen. So yana habravu, yajera ngu, wa no zenda, no ra rumbank, omokomasho banka, okubika sentezawe, ovamustani biki, ovamu sentenale, o post bank. Ya zeta participating institutions, ngoro kuzi, konkawa kamo, no juti nyonija kufana esente, ezza agurkarcha credit fund. Ez Bank of Uganda, rukherezu. Then ba manyangori specifically, base processing. Yajera ngu, bonjireho, zkanz, zkanz, ah, habizukora bonjireho, abinente, winefarm yawente zchenire, no ndakonjera mef ente, niyo yata katoru stocking. No wasa kuija, bakue, bakueze sete, ochindu garuko gurinte za urukumi, uzinjero nfaru yau. Yaya bazaha ba nyambarara, baridas, aboku je zoko kweje savantu, okukora obi hingi, obuwe sete. Kutarukora obi hingi, oboku dyaksha. Konkaya yava, yava gambirangu bonjire mama ni, kureweka ngu yava modern farming, tuahinga, tuahinga. Tuahinga, ebinte, ebere abentu hereza sente, then tuahinga, tu kozesa, ya karma jizi, kujera ngu tushohosebi hingi. Ya tu gambiras small business recovery fund, omuirewa kovidy, businesses karebe, izkarebe naku. Ezmuze kagarukenyima, mwen Bank of Uganda katika haka sente, akaka keso, a business esenchi. Yajera ngu na zonu tuzufuna, tukurabo mukamasho bank zitu, nokuzumo kamasho banko kajutu ni nyende sente za, za, za recovery, small business recovery fund. Then, they should guide you. Yatwireka ngubachira ba anturwenda, nshanjona babiri, aba business esenchi mnonga, hamwen na viviri, viviro muwe. Aba business esza zahuru agati, aba funa harigeza sente. Mwemba re, kumpurra, kandje nku hinichina hindro. Uh, omoronyo ro chari, ija.
That's the beauty of having Oembabazi and Wagonza as the MCs, so. Uh, basewa nava nyabo, um, once again, rabachiira, uh, hatintuzamu za presentations, enchi. Presentation ezakueza ten minutes only. Uh, just, deputy governor's representative, with your permission, just to inform the audience about the Bank of Uganda people present, so that in case they have an issue, they can reach out to them. Mwariwa, omuntajure t-shirt yahoid, eh, nahona logo yah Bank of Uganda, ogonavana rugo Bank of Uganda. So, abo ine chivuzu, abo inakapura, anything, choko inakubuzi, just, um, call that person. Uh, ajakorobat for, um, avoidance of doubt, just to emphasize that, um, the Bank of Uganda team is led by, um, deputy governor's representative, Philip Andrew Abulia. Uh, so, um, Andrew, yabaya gambri neytris, so we already know him. Mama Bank Secretary, Susan Kanemewa, uh, na yagamba neychenyenchakare, so we already know her. Executive Director Research, Ada Momogume, ogonomuntuwa, wa nyu very much, so ni momo manya. And zaku mo ha ten minutes just to tell you about monetary policy. Uh, twine Director Communications Department, Kenneth Gesa. Uh, Kenneth Sinue yajunani zibua organizing a town hall meeting eji. Uh, twine, um, Director Commercial Banking Department, Huntington Waswa. Uh, na we Aroho, twine, um, Acting Director Human Resource Department, Agnes Ibarra Mugisha. Um, Head Agriculture Credit Facility and Other Credit Schemes, Alex Luanja. Head Corporate Affairs, Andrew Luana. Uh, Director National Payment Systems Department Representative, Alex Ochan. Over there, he'll also be talking to us for a few minutes about national payments, especially electronic payments and financial literacy. Then twine, um, Director Statistics Department, represented by Edward Twinomugisha, over there in a white t-shirt. And Edward is in charge of the digital evaluation, deputy governor, just, we are migrating from the analog evaluation to digital evaluation to get feedback from the audience. Um, um, uh, the, um, Director Ivan Amagragarijo is within Mbarara, but for now, we have Paul Oembabazi from non-bank financial institutions. And then we have, um, Economic Research, again, um, Barbara Asimwe. Uh, we have Sarah from the SCF, together with Alex. Sarah, thank you so much for, Sarah Muboke. Thank you so much for coming, and many others, abandibarikuri bakutekaniza korolante, brichin chata mbraje. So for now, um, yakubasa ba, tumanze tuemeremukachi. About VIPs, it is okay, timbe inobshovorozii, but the people decide, just stand up. Uh huh, uh huh, bozakuri hi hint, over you. Omusho meni kutambra je. Okay, just to stretch a bit, in a minute, before we can proceed, okay, we may get seated. Thank you, that was a simple stretch. So, abakireka no munikirize, nyete, omukuru, obakueta Alex Luanja, Alex Luanja, newe akutuara. Uh, Agriculture Credit Facility, ba itataka izire, mlingo mbagambire, kentuina Executive Director, uh, Research. Research Directorate at the Bank of Uganda, kandogo, uh, Mont White Hanu, kandine we, uh, Dr. Ada Momogume. So before Alex comes, please allow me to invite Dr. Ada Momogume. Uh, I, I jabagambire via monetary policy in about five to ten minutes, then we proceed. Doctor.
Bangambarangomba shovor, revia monetary policy omoronya angkore, bangamorebe gomere, ni zakujeza ho. Ati, omuami, Philip yavai, yajezoko bashovor ra, echikue, echitukweta price stability. Atomo nomogo anyo Bank of Uganda, umwe, no goa price stability mwen. Konkuzomi tiharu banjuma, but musha we, esente kanohungu noriezao shaa. Abakua nka mpodinango, omuhendo wevi into, guriya mpaho, nokugakaha ansii, kantuleva ngo temba. Price stability, tichikuma ntsungu we, omuhendo wevi into, nokushuma. Price stability nti manisa, ngo naankha, omuhendo wevi into wa, ngo yonjera, ngo yonjera ampora ampora. Tichikuma ntsungu hati, kogurekitoje, onarwagu zekitoje, erizo ba, nyensia, nosaksha ngo, ebeyikitoje, yagari tiraha ansii. Ah, price stability nti manisa, monaguzekitoje, nanagurekitoje, nanashina guza mate, nanashina gurama te. Ebeyama te, omakogu, no, ono kuija, noguma, nogu temba ampora ampora. So, omuhendo weva mate waru garhabetano, kuzi, kaza haru kaga narushanju. Eh, yo, ntsu manu manisa ngo, ebeyate emba, konkatia te emba mnonga. So, niyo price stability yonpo. So, price stability, tichikuma ntsungu we, omuhendo wevi into, mwen, noguma nogushuma. So, omonomogo anyo Bank of Uganda, ere no nogoku, okure, ngo, 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 ngo webi, mbeyebi into, tiyate emba mnonga. Shit, nikinaankha ma, naankha Philip yavai abadizengo, o, inomutuaro gua we. Wa guzekitojikiya we, xachin narsho wa gusente yawe, esente wasitekomo mushahu. Konkana bakana kusitekomo mushahu, nofero. Abakua hati, chibaremo, wa gusente yawe, meriyonemwe, esente wasitekomo mushahu. Nti manisa ngo wajaza kwezomo akagumo, nobata kine meriyonemwe. Nosakua yine meriyonemwe. Uh, we, we, nosakua, meriyonemwe yawa yonpo ho, nizakua riye hansi yamirione, iwa, inomakoku oguire. Abuka inflation, ntiweta price nankha, omuhendo wevi into guma ngo yonjera. Zonchi manisa ngo, wakwata meriyonemwe yawa, wanashi merioniwe. Okasitekomo mushahu, no vano feru. Konkawa siteko omu, omu bank, bakakonjera ho interest, nasha amagoba, again, kumi neviiri. Nanshi passent, omu akagumo, yonchi manisa ngo, atirista mpaho, wago ba mu. Wago ba mu, havakuwa inflation, ye, 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 yepichua kapetano. We yaho, we, wa, wa, we yaho interest ekuboto njire, nosaksha ngo, inemoma bakwa, atis ga, ga, ge, ge, bitwe kankamshanju. So, ntiyukuma ntsungu hati, price stability, uh, nti manisa ngo. O, inesent, o, inesentezo kubu ine, omushau na wa guzeki ntikiau. Orebe ngo, ah, huasitek, no tekwa kovanu tunga mo amagoba. Wa gumo chutamiri, okasite kansi onfars, okaze biyamer, nasho kasitekomo mweku. Giraba kikuru bakawajire miyeko, miyeko yava niyavele ba bank, otika muesente za, ogu, no teka mu. Oh, ntiwa, ngoro ngomontu ya, kuya vera from kikuru, aragomo ekoku, abukomo ekoku, ekewe rupan. Konkamo, o, esente zokitekomo mwe, omweku, no vano feruwa. Konkawa siteko mbank, okatunga mama goba, boromak. Amagoba kumpaho, nka tekwa kuvana kachera, inflation, inflation, ni, 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 Philip yavai abadizengo. Niyo speed, nanshi, eh, eh, emihelebi into, ne yeri taboromak. So, omonomo gitokuwa Bank of Uganda, twanba janguno price stability. Eh, antuan to jirangu, omuhendo wevi into, on average, gutaka hingura, haru five percent, five percent obermak. So, ntiyuanchi manisa ngo tuitirza, omuhendo wevi into guma ne kutemba, konka gutaka hingura, five percent. A five percent, doanama dieta chumunya angkoro ronji, tinkezi. Eh? Eh? Ah ah. Ah ah. Uchakabitarara itukomi. So. Twanji manu price stability. Eh inflation ne five percent. Nimanji manu omuheno wewinto burumak. Gutaka hingura epichwa kapitanu harichkomi. So twan twichira za niitwe. Ngomuheno wewinto kutekwa kuvano kuteema. Konkaku takahingura epichwa kapitanu harichkomi. So twabi twatunga inflation ye yatu percent nashi epichwa kabera harichkomi. Yes. Twatwa akora kurundi. Konkha naankataje tiitu. Ne epichwa kapitanu harichkomi. So esente za wederfo oyinese zawa zone. Waguzeki intikiau. No orebe ahura satek. Washaanga tokutunga amagoba. Abakwengro epichwa kapitanu harichkomi. No vanofero. Oboine omtuwaro gumwe. Oboine mtuwarebiri. Oboine billioni. Wasvika otatu nyemo amagoba. Abakwengro epichwa kapitanu harichkomi. No vanomaningu no wa nofero no tekwa kuvano feru. So oyinu obosebi komusako. Obosebi kombanka. Konkata kasitekanse onfarse nasho kasitekomo mweku. Ahuwa nozakuba noferu. So omuamoguitokuwa Bank of Uganda telephona nyogo aliyaktu. Eh kimkure bro bank of Uganda nogoku. Kureyebangu eh omuheno wewinto. Tokuwa hingura epichwa kapitanu harichkomi. Na omuana omuana abazaku mboza tshi. Omuheno wewinto umuamoguma nyamuta. Abokuba esati nekitoje. Tikwe tikwe nyiraha aspidemo. Nozaksha nesati abokwa esati neder gahelu. Ne tekwa kuvane temba mononga ktili ekitoje. So konku twanba twangangu omuheno wewinto gutaka hingura epichwa kapitanu harichkomi. Twanji manu nangu wewinto bio ne bio gora. Obesati obemoonyo. Obekitoje. Ah obesa abundi. Bio nawabe giita. Okalemihendo yebebi into bio gora. Twanji manu nyirangu on average. Takahingura epichwa kapitanu harichkomi. Nogomuamoguitokuwa Bank of Uganda. Habakati nte habaki nte jidangu epichwa kapitanu harichkomi. Abokwa ntu manangu. Eh mihendoebi into etewakweyonjera. Twenan tukiichira za esyo onana ichira za ngomuheno wewinto na nova nova kuzo amo America. Atoma omuamérica nabano naankha inflation tage tiyabo. Ne epichwa kabera harichkomi. Itutukati ekara kapitanu harichkomi. So eh mihendoebi into etewenyireho. Ka niti manu manu nangu wetu unka ihaanga tiyakura. So nti twichira za ngomuheno wewinto kuweyonjere konkutkaya nyiramu nonga. Niyo omuamogwa Bank of Uganda. Kanogomuamogwa nje ogua price stability. Nijena shovor na jezoko shovor. Mweva monanga kumpichira. Obukaro bua Executive Director Research Bank of Uganda Dr. Adam Mogume. So now ntusamu presentation endiyo. Presentation agenda korua Mr. Alex Luanja. Kandi Mr. Alex Luanja nabana mngambi rokare. Nwe akora Agricultural Credit Facility. The Small Business Recovery Fund. Eloni eh ebiohinoji. Nelone yobu business obuche obua tongiro obuzi mokofi de nineteen. Nazaku gamba murujungu kuya heza. Owemba Bazi come and translate. Mweva Alex.
Thank you MC. Thank you Deputy Governor Representative Mr. Andrew Philip Abulia. For having given me this opportunity to interact with the people of Mbarara. All protocol observes. Observe ladies and gentlemen. Good morning. Ohrenso nga anti eh chinchikua galukoke rakochi tuchikulu nyo. Seba mukama wangoyakunzi kiriza. Tujia kwe saanga olimio Luganda. No lizungu. Kubanga waluo umami omu ya yogera. Inti waluwesi ezasosowazo olimio lizungu. Eraba fuweto olimio lizungu burundi nyo. Ne valfuweta kumbuto ezitalimu mmeri. Norrenso ngayo nange ndiakoke raluganda. Nga chenjagala kobanga ngenda koke raku chigambo cha gurikaricha. Era negerijetsolo kufuna muesente zitu yamba. Okzosowaza muyenima. Kobanga ye sexta eh mu government yeta dekesira. Okulava inga tue kulakulanya. Ova abana Uganda inga tue bulamowav. So Mr. Deputy Governor sa. Oyakunso nyua kwecho. I'll be using interchangeable English language and Luganda. Ndewano nakulwalero okubanga tuge raku chigambo cha agricultural credit facility. Ne small business recovery fund. Era njagala infunze funze. Nga chenjagala kweksigazawo obude. Obuenda okusozesa. Okufuna embozi. No kuda maybe buzo. Biyemuli na kunsonge kuataga na kua agricultural credit facility. Ne small business recovery fund. Chinkose burundi nyo inti mukama wangoyabadawawa nospechi. Facility zizi ne biri agricultural credit facility. Ne small business recovery fund azoge deko. Kakati isechi nyangu ide nyo. Tugeenda kuita mubu isi. No kuanyuli raavo ababadaba tachimani. Ne engandi inti mani burundi. Intifabanta bembarara agricultural credit facility. Ne small business recovery fund. Tujitege rabilundi nyo era tutanise ohujifuna. Agricultural credit facility was established in two thousand nine. Ingechiguru vidira chua yokue kulaba antuso osowaze vyobulimi. Okongero motindo kwebe biyatulima wa nomu Uganda. Eno facility Bank of Uganda edikwasaganiza wamu. Ne commercial banks zonamu Uganda. Eh zo Bank of Uganda zero license. Okukola omuli mu ogua banking. Era sentezuno ezagurikati credit facility. Tuzikuwa osovoziko zesa. Okzosowaze vyobulimi. Okongera kumotindo kwebe vyolima. Ova mukubioburundi vyori namakago. Muchi mani burundi inti ekonomiya Uganda. Obeyefune biya Uganda. Vi miride kua gurikaricha. Norrenso ngayo government esazeo etekesira. Ah ma nyigo na. Kusekteno eyagurikaricha. Okulaba anti tuvwa kumbulama guli. Abantu vektibu kugwaga ma antiboba kolira kidachonka. Wa watsolo okole rolo buto. Ne enga tefusigazako. Eh vimo biyatsolo okutunda. Ne twingiza. Eh simbi monsa ozafe. Momakaga fe. Sentezino osovodo kuzewala. Okutukiradala kubillions. Biri nobuka dechkomi. Two point one billion. Na esche chenchinko merede. Wobanga project yorimu. Waitaga sentezusu kaku esu kamu two point one billion. Management ya Bank of Uganda. Eh cha sozolo okutula. Ne gamba obosa zewo ngosoya galakwe wulobuka debutano. I mean billioni tano. Ova billioni kumi. Oksinzira projecte yo. Sentezee ingiza mu Uganda wa nu. Nomusolo gozasula. Ne freeni anyingizino sentezee engui ra angazi dollars. Ne employment yowaba na Uganda. Bayinzo kusala ona waga ambayya denga memorandum agreement. Etugamba tukomekubuka de I mean billioni. Biri nobuka dechkomi. Basoloko wa oh billion zeta ano. Oksinzira kumbugaso projecte yo kwebe kola. Muju kiraburundi nyontevise revyaita. Mukama yatua eh berenungi. Abantu nevalima. Netulime bijanjalo netulima kasoli ulichimu chadia. Kati wetuari makasoli netufuna oksomosewa. Nga katari tekaliwo. Abarimenebarara janira government. Ulijomutugamba tulime. Tualimie na yobutari tekutrina. Government ya fe nunje buliliza. Yateka billions kumi. Eh rioyo asovola. Okugulebi rimé kobantu. Abistwari inge. Ova abiongerekomotindo. Nga chetuluvira kwe kulaba anti gomulimiariwa nampliliza. Akataro ukarina. Kakati gubangoli mugrini trade. You can borrow up to maximum of ten billion. Sentezino ozewarela. Wakati omuakogumo bemiezumukaga. Okutukiradala kumiyako munaana. Chisinzirembos jogendo okuwe rana yo. Nabako Marshall Bank. Ehirona project yo jogendo ukola. Novundi wesente zogenda okwe wala. Ne wobangoli mugrini trade. Sentezino ongogenda ugula birime. Eh vwe demiri vama zo kukungula. Okirizuwa okwe wala sentezino. Obutasuka banga riya miaka eh biri. Oinzo kobango ogenda kuteka we kolero. Ne engo inoka la research. O ino kunonya katari. Kakati gomuntuwa gua muturu verio. Wetukuwa kalembereza. Eh miake satu. Nga tonana ba kutandika kusasula lo niyo. Ne enga ohwayo ka interest. Ne enga principle. Dewewala. Dewaita grace periodi ye miake satu. Nga toni sasu de. So maximum grace period. Kuproject eyagurikaricha. Ingada daranene. Atenga eta agokole researchi. Okunonye zaona nawali. Tukuwa maximum grace period of three years. Ne wobangoli mugrini trade. Yo terinako kalemberezako. Ne banga erisingira yo daro obutono. Mukwe wala sentezino. Jiri miezumukaga deoka. Oinza ngo oinzo kubosi bie bijanjalo bio. Tumanyevijanjaliye miezusatu. Ummezo ogoku na olimokuani ka. Ogoku taanu ononyeza katari. Oboya oyagade akasente ke yongerekoo. Mukomukaga wetunda osasule. Eh bangia idioba we waze. Eh chirunge echisinga mobionna. Ntizino sente ozevolela kubutundutundu kumi navuwiri kubrichkomi. Yeroni chasinzida la okube ra eyawan se nyo. Banayuganda bananange. Era fabanta bembarara. Trade anile sentezino. Era njagalo kubeva za. Kobango wetutunriamo record sesafe. Mukose burundi nyo magurikati credit facility. Nga mukama wangoyawa gambia. Small Business Recovery Fund. Na yo muju muju kozesezaburundi. Kobanga mweva antu. Uligovernment program yeteka o. Muje yu nira. Okulaba anti eh tugasa wetu batutambla. Moribaka kuvili kusentro. Ne sentro yo it is justice center. Kobango motowe Mbarara. Nomoto we guru. Nomoto we mbare. Naya inzo kugula osfarmu ye. Era singa waguza mataka. Mo central region nebateka yo farms. Naya tetemu tashola kuvakuru. Najawa nokola farmer. Kare kitegeza. Inti western region ma wakutakati. Mukukose sasente zino. Ezagurikati credit facility. Era tueva za. Mongere. Okuzeta nira. Naya chindeso wa norwalero. Kwe kulaba ngatubera nembosu namwe. Tulabebuzi wutivu musanse. Mukosa sentezino. Biyeviva somozavichi. Biyatsolo kuyumiako. Atu wetuvera nembosu namwe. Chitu yamba okufuna amagezi. No okongera eh vinto okulaba anti. Tusalama gezukula magatongera. Mukufungeli okosa sentezino. Biyatuongera. Memo memorandum agreement proposals. Ne tukwala mince of finance. Ne babi kiriza. Era ne vitugasa. Kakati wetuanga tumari dizembozisa fe. Muja kunonya Alex Luanja. Ne mwani nazeguwaita saramobuke. Wetunawera ufonatuberi mumbosezo. Wata kapeni. Wandi ka echivuzocho. Dangoyogero olimio Luganda. Dangoronyo gerolu nyankore. Oboruzungu dangofuwete. Eh vwebuzo biyona. Tujia kubida mu. Ah nasani dokufuna sentezino. Kwe nange ngogo mutuchino omu. Ova group. Ova company. Kasta twanga tulimulai niyagurikaricha. Okirizuwa kwe wala sentezino. Zona zoboya gade. Ku onuro butundutundu kumi navuwiri kubrichkomi. Wobango ogenda kulima. Ogenda kuruunda. Ogenda kusimbo oyagala kusimadamu. Oyagala kuzimba structures farm yo. Ulicho nacho sobola cholo ozako ne enga chirimo agurikati value chaini. Eh zo sente weziri. Eh roso lo kuzifuna under the agricultural credit facility. Ne wobango mazo kumpuliliza kwecho. Chuetago kufunira kosente. Chichi chetsola eh chetaga vira kosente zino. Woboga ndakugula taka. Nedda tatusikuwa roanso nga. Eh vwekuataga na nama taka mobi mani. Atetwa gala kuatse sente tuzivire mutaka. Atenga waluo mna Uganda omulara. Naya yagaloo ziko zesa. Ah watsola zikuwa la. Woboya galakusimba miti. Eh chonacho right now. Te trukiliza. Kobanga gestation periodi ye ye miti. Ono tundu olio koezeyo sentezino. Eh riomutomulara soroku zewala. Chinzoko tware banga. Kakati tetusa tetso la okuola kuge ndakusimba miti. Ne tucha ali nembosu wakati. Wabank of Uganda ne mince of finance. Okulaba antinaba basimbe miti. Kasta banga ina cash flows. Esovolo kusasula angalo ni. Nge mitige wedi kulaa. Eh basoloko tukiliza kobanga tuliku green financing nowadays. Eh yo proposal. Twajiteka yo mince of finance. Era wabari banga vajikiliza. Tulikoma wojemuli. Ne tuba buwira. Kakati guan puliliza chuetago okola cho kokufuna sentezino. Kuesoko ugulewa accounti mo bank. Kobanga mukama wangoyangawa gambia. Zino sentezita mcommercial banks. Tononya Bank of Uganda weeri. Inti jogendo kufunira sentezino nedda. Guagena mcommercial banka yonna. Centenary, stambyki, micro finances, eh zero license tee. You know housing finance. Any bank that is near you. Please approach them. Ogendoba gambia. Inti tawade kumusomo. Yuzi wa nona batubuli rekuyagurikati credit facility. Era chichi ndese wa nonu nyambe. Esolozifuna. Wandi kawa kubaita proposal. Sentezo genda ziko zesa otia. Kobange chubanka chegendoksinzira ko. Okulaba inti mbutu fosani de. Okufuna sentezino. Wetuari tutanika skimwe nukume biri ya aviri. Twasanga wobuzibu. Kobanga government ya lieta deo ontubuli mo. Ntwayagalokwe wala sentezino. Ah ino kwe rano musingo. Anto musingo gubateka kesira. Ngu ino kwe rana randitaito. Twagendo okulaba ngasente weziri. Ne enga si ulio omu. Omuli meyandi agado kufuna sentezino. Intarina randitaito. Government ne gonza mu. Ne gamba tinedda. Katufuna abantu ba noba farmers. Abatonoto no. Eh abababari mi. Ne tewayinaranti taitoz. Tuba yambiru tane waga ambanida. Muji ngamuli mu group. Abantu batano eh viri. Ah sato oksiza groupi amu ngawi nebera. Osolokwe wala. Ngu kwe salanti zero agreement. Eh taritaito. Ne we wala apto obuka de makumi ya aviri. Nga tuta troyinamusingo gwa tadeo. Wa wulanga otadeo karanti zero agreementiko. Akaraga ohwana nyine kutake erio. Era noe rosinga kuwa debalu e kakasa. Inta Alex Luanja mutuzewo Mbarara wa nu. Era tainavu zibu netakaliyari koliye. Ya denga tarinara randitaito. Bank agenda ukulu obuka de makumi ya aviri. Ngu omuntu. Kati wamuwe rava antu ngakumi. Eh zo millioni vividi zivaziko zeti. Zimazo kuyingira. Noru echio. Twagala muetanefi gambe chavaita block allocation. Block allocation chiga chitegeza. Inti mugeya okua ta applications zanwe. Muziteke wamu. Zuge nde mo banka. Bazikolekona enga ulio mu. Agenda kugula wa accountiye. Era agenda kufuna sente. It is a block. Chichi chichi ndu chituetani de new. Era nozani bache kozesa. Namu wa muchi tani de new. Chi yambie nyava bali mi. Aba mkuata ampola. Abatina narandi taitoz. Ere chichi pichigude wonyo. Potential okulaba anti abantu. Bafuna sentezino. Naba suviza inti ngenda kumalo obude butono new. Ne twinah small business recovery fund. Zino sente the government deyateka umunsaku. Okulaba ngayamba obobisnessi obutono tono. Obakonziwa. Oloha embeera ya covidi. Ngawa yajao. Covidi weyajia tuwainaroko daoni. Abantu kataba chiaso volakutulabi balina. Tabasu chiaso olagenda kugula wali balete wa no. Kakati business rizikonziba. Ya denka na obuwa de wali butuluma abantu ngakafa. Government ya febuli riza. Ya sala amagezi okutuonya. Aba agenda mukama ba ba wachi umulechirundi. Ne ne taso volamu wa abantu. Abantu we bawa na ne gamba toke. Abantu batasi zaa. Naye te businesses zaa we. Kuwango ra te we bulamu. Owa Uganda z economy. Na wu nebateka o billion zichikomi. Ne participate financial solutions komasho banks. Na wu ne bakizokteka o billion ichikomi. Zebillion zebikomi bebe ri. Ezo ngabro namunan. Nabro namunan. Konka yagarka yatu gambra ngu. Ombuyo bojiru buche. Barojiru kue mereza homu. Aba bagambiye bank of Uganda ne karaisensi. Egareke guma ne kurebo kokubano okola. Bue no mwe habiya be na korabe. Takujenda jenombe rajiru beyini. Ya jirangu barojiru kume mereza. Ya malaya jirangu. Statistics. Ya kujiru kubare okuwa kureba. Ngaba milioni anani na. Milioni anani nazawa ya Uganda. Mbakosa mobile money. Ah harigiri zoba. Ya djangue ketan chirem. Enkumi bero namuende katana. Mtni. Eru kwata gananaza banka zitu. Konka yagongu harigiri zoba. Milioni anani na. Zava abantu wa ya Uganda. Mbakosa mobile money. Azana ya tuguza ngota kosa mobile money erizo mukono. Kuna reva tagu eriza na teka tekevin tui bili. Maybe haro tajukosa ti achcheenga. Nanga tuwena tujukozesa. Gue na tikambo zumurinyankori. Otakosa mobile money ayerizo mukono. Yes, mwa chileba. Echikuma isangutwe na tregi hanchi. Ah mobile money. Yagarka yatu gambraho. Yatu gambra ongu. Ah mobile money. Eh mwe ba shanjiremu. Nobushuma bryah mobile money. Ngukomuntu guriga akutere ra. Atene bakuetanankana nanka. Atu wa hangure sente. Ngwati sindaka hakodeji. Ya djangue tuwegeni deserize. Obushuma bryahho. Ngwato bezu obrohichikuma mbatuiva. Eh eda nito ba customer. Nenga na ba bivi. Itawa kosa mobile money. Ngutupapa mononga. Ntupapa mononga. Bakujirangu wa hangure sente. Tuwa banza we buza. Nazahangura shenakorachi. Eh? Tuachi buza ho. Iowai kanojiruti. Niwa djangue sindaka hakodeji. Niowai kanosindaka kodi. Esumi ya wena basaku dizamo. Badanwa sindaka kodejo. Nava sakuzu msumi ya odino mungaro. Konka wodjirangu ri mshuma wamusindicha lakodeya. Kujirangu musindichire. Wazakuria. Atanda ka yehwe ritchi mchigya sumi ya wachona chiya. Aba kakakoda kuwa muheriza. Geni ya djangue tuwegeni deserize. Ah harigero. Ya malaya tujirangu. Na ne chindi. Ngogovernmentetan chere kureka ngu. Esimo zona. Zahanichisomazi nagito. Haro kujirangu. Ezibashanjire zitahanichisitari kiriya. Barionu baziyah. Kudiso kuchende ezobu bushuma. Obagamasumo. So ya jirangu nova sakutera. Kuyenge ahsumu we. Obere yomazi nagawe. Nanga obere yomazi nagondijo. Statut? Sorry, iti sta. Sta igana chenda namshanj. Sorry. Sta igana chenda namshanj. Deni oteke ohashi. Denu rebe esumi yabe registerinjumazi nagawe. Ya jirangu haro abuzichubucha bitcoin. Ngwati bitcoin zozu gamba ochi. Ya ya gamba omurfutfu ti. Ya jirangu bitcoin eka tanikumu. Munkumi bero namuenda. Ngwaba abantu bakoeza. Nkukutukosa. Abantu bakoeza. Xashurra hosente kondijo. Nanga okubeka hisente zaa. Konka ya jirangu. Bank of Uganda. Ya ya djangue central banks zone. Za ah za banken kuru mahanga. Tuzukurujiretinga bitcoin. Tuzarices. So ya jirangu obere ngumujenda bitcoin. Ya jirangu oze yo. Wejere yo. Eh? So yokoti hemtoari kumi. Mchaka roshangete mbere. Eru kubaran kama kumi ya avili. Oguaku rataho. Oshanke ruku barazu. Ofere kwa sente zaa. Ya jirangu bank of Uganda na minso finance. Barionba kuwata ganahamwe. Kuwanza vaareva ya bashime kureba rajuru. Basha ngabaku basaku jumanijenga. Ngubaragaru kakugamba ra. Aba nyambarara. Kuwarijira isensinga. Ya jirangu chindi national payment eru kora. Nukueje sa abantu. Nkose sayasente. Ya cheta financial literacy. Financial literacy. Okueje sa abantu nko sayasente. Ningi njera bamu machiru gomokachi. Konka o o agonza. Ya gaba jiraha ya gambu omu 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 omurinyoro. Konka rinyoro no nyankori tui bishikushana. Eh toru nyakitara. Ya gaba jiraha ya na tuje sa. Ah ah ya na tuje sa. Ah akose sentezitu. Nukureka ngo sentezitu ntushoza. Kurijira nokutuki ngana. Kandi tureka nguburukufuna kasentenitubeka. Bue na chaya jirangu echyo. Nchukorua department eh ya eh ya national payment seju. Bu na nabakuwa wasigira. Arabai nechubuzu. Nazakwa namboz. Konka nyenda konjero kamu ngu ah. Kujirangu echu bitaka kueba. Orukugamba yaba na gamba yu guma nojiriachi. Guma no handike buzo biya. Abakuwa kora tijiri zengubuna bahu. Chirichabanza nichizakueba. So wana bagamba guma no handike buzo biya we. Ne ronituzakubega rokamo. Oektinisa eh na yigu. Oku musaidjogo. That man is the whole minister of finance of wonyolo. Kitara kingdom. I want to recognize. That's why I said oektinisa. He's the whole minister of wonyolo kitara kingdom. My coem see today. Na shanga. Mwana wakarka wa mereza abantu anuya. Na shanga ngu emsi na inamani minji. Wadjungu mwenangemer. Na deputy governor Emmer. I am also enjoying that. I want to introduce the following. Kanya njuri haba abantuaba. Timgo sebutaho. Na unisi. Barinkahi. Ah ha. Aba abantu nwaru gomuchitongo. Nishwa kue ta umra. Uganda micro finance roadrunner authority. Baba bagambiye nguharo. Aba aba bank of Uganda we karaisensi. Tuwaga tuwagambiye karaji sakoz. Dene za sakozindi. Ezitaka chise. Rurungo kuzza ah ah kufuna raisensi ya bank of Uganda. Nabandi abashimikwanaba. Naba. Naba guzisente. Ba shenikwanbi haraisensi. Okoku. So na yu akubano zwa o o amane rendu. O amane rendu amane. Ashenikwanai ne raisensi kuruga. Okoku. Thank you very much. Webadi oektinisa.
Webadi Paul. Happy presentation. Omugambi akugarukaho. Niwe director, commercial banking department, Bank of Uganda. Ah Mister Huntington Waswa.
Mgambiru nguagambe.
You find yourself with a disagreement with your bankers. Under normal circumstances, you should first settle your disagreements between yourself and your bankers. If you think you're not getting justice, you can come to Bank of Uganda for redress. And the bank will come and intervene. Now intervention does not necessarily mean that you're right. You could actually be wrong and the bank is right. But the Bank of Uganda comes in between the two of you. To show you why you are right and the bank is wrong. Or why you're wrong and the bank is right. So in case you have a complaint and the complaint goes against you. Don't say Bank of Uganda is siding with the bankers. No. What we want is fairness. What we want is justice. In your relationship with these institutions. In most cases when they come to you, they would say. Muri disi disani tuzibabi chiri. Mwe isakuzibeka. Morawasa kueguze. Na mwenu baba bagambiye. Rebiya agricultural credit facility. Ezisese zimuzi ya rugomo government. Konka kurgomo government chira manisa. Guaze guza tora xashuri. Iyo wa bazakuzikuzikuzi. Haru ndijo waze gurize. Ya xashura. Ne rova wana ezo kuguzi. Na wu wu waze gurize. Leba nguazikozese chiu waze guriza. Ozi xashuri. Nndijo muntavone kuzibona. Abakuwa government. Buge omara leba government. Governments. Waza kamparabona barabara kugamira. Government etu yambi. Government etu yambi. Government esese ze initi njenji. Mimo mushemiri ya kurebi ya government. Mora xashurimi shoro. Kuxashurimi shoro. Oshume kuboi nechora kor. Etira rugamo esete. Ezira kuyamba kuxashurro. Mushoro. Government ne tunge esete. Ezo ezo kumbi chesinku uto. Kumbi kama rugwari ro. Nebinti. Kubariindu. Obusindi obumwe. Haryaba barara barariwe. Omujiro busindi. Eh bie bio na government eri tinge esete. Banks zirihoo. Kubakuzese esete. Mukole business. Muntunge tungu kuma garagani. Mushume savan. Konka na government mushume. Kudire berira. Mora xashurro mushoro. Wata xashwire mushoro. Obunchi rasa kugumira niwokugamira government. Eh direchi ya kurela. Na wu wachi bitu ragamba ho. Traza kuatugia tura bagambiye. Rebiya bank of Uganda. Nango museku kuzese esete. Mobi kese desanyu. Konka nyenda zakwa bagambiye. No buvunani zubuundi. Goku xashura omushoro. Wa wakuzele business si. Omwi umbaro mwini mba account anti. Bijire. Sorry. Wax. Ba banks. Wax. Oh. No. No. I know they are good accountants. And these accountants should help you to prepare your records. Everything you do, keep a record of it. That's the only way you'll be able to know whether you're making profits or you're making losses. If you're making profits well and good, your life will be better. You'll be able to get money to pay back the loans you've borrowed. You'll be able to get profits and do other things for yourself. Because in most cases when you go to a bank, you want to borrow. The bank will ask for collateral. And the collateral they they want is a physical asset in most cases. Something in which you have an insurable interest. A house, for example. The only way you can build a house and put it in your names and you say this one is mine. Is by getting money. Sometimes if you can't find any other way, you borrow. Do business and do it diligently. Take your records very carefully. Don't use the principle the bank has given you to build a house to sleep in. Because you don't find money to pay back the loan. Unless if you're building a house for rent. The rent is what you use to pay the loan. Or if you have a you you gain full employment. You use your salary to pay back the loan. Otherwise, if you fail to pay unfortunately these bankers. Because the money they used to lend to you comes from people who save. And when a saver wants their money, they are uncompromising. When I want my money, I want it. That time I come. If you tell me come tomorrow, come the other day, then I'll raise an alarm. That by the way, this bank is is not able to give me my savings, which means this bank has a problem. And if you tell one, two, three people, the whole town will get know that this bank has a problem. And before long you find a a queue of people coming withdraw their funds from the from the institution. And when that one happens, it doesn't affect only one institution. It affects the whole system. That's why we 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 are carrying out these sensitization workshops. So that you appreciate your responsibility as a citizen of the country. And the the responsibility of the central bank and the responsibility of the bankers. So that at the end of the day, when we meet and have a conversation the way we are doing right now. We we have a meeting of minds. We agree or we may disagree, but we 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 should be in principle. So we these the banks have talked about twenty five banks. I've talked about the credit institutions, there are four. And the microfinance depositing institutions are three. But in addition to those, we have what we call the credit reference bureaus. What the credit reference bureaus do is they keep your records regarding your borrowing relationship. If you've been observant, when you go to an institution to borrow, they want to look at your credit report. That credit report is good from the credit reference bureau. It shows you how you've been borrowing. Where you've been borrowing and how you've been paying. Now make sure you keep. Do everything you possibly can to maintain a clean record. Why? Because the next time you go to borrow. You should be very proud of your credit history. If it is good. Say yes. I've borrowed from a bank A or credit institution A or microfinance depositing institution B. And this is how I've been paying. If your record is good, you should use it to negotiate a lower interest rate. If your record is bad, even the bankers will tell you, by the way, yes, we can we can lend to you, but. Because your record is not very good, you. So. Wata xashwire mabanja. Ora gumombo huku. Ora geno rexenjeriza. Buliamuru xenjeriza. Abantu muniyame muniyame. Tichire lebe kajimasim. Na wu echyo. Ndabashaba. Ndabexenjeriza. Mozoma bank. Aga bank of Uganda. Ya diye berira. Abadiyo mu mwa vika. Kanda abadiyo mu ayegusa. Ah. Deputy governor. Ni bie bie anjevi. Webadi mnongo.
Tino Adesahu? O Adesahu, o gogo chinareba, akashomera Kampara, konkori nyankore ya arwege. Nori chiga ya jerashi, ya Adesahu. Ati nyewe, akashomero mcharo, ati ba njira ngamburuganda ni nukambomuri nyankori. Onka we varimnonga? Maybe akoko nde serezahu, ya kagambomurjungu, asana nyena onka teko muri nyankori, akak. Ya jeranguazom banka, okateka ya kasete kawe, ningo ukawihiri ukaroon?
So, twine abake nyibai itu, Kurugam Deposit Protection Fund of Uganda, Mr. Patrick Ezaga, aikera ali hamunaitue, mkwenda mderoro muungaro kumutangi, raku moachi, ramu limbarara. Kandi Patrick ajakubana itue shortly, but before him, mkwenda kueta omunyoro Hassan Yangabiyaki, na wena manyoru nyakitara, aijie atugambire Ebiacarance Management. Ora wena insongayune kuataka nane se ente, ezitukose sable kiro, kurugira kimo hakoini, kuiki raki mo hampapura. Hassan agenda kubana avagambira, Hassan ijo gambire abantu, bambarara, bikuata genene se ente, runde simbi.
Otie mno, owektinsa agonza, kandi oli mgambirizi wa orukura torunu, ezo valino. Otie mno, mkamoa itu, Deputy Governor, abasi venisi abambarara, nimbatangi ra, kani nimbaramu kia, kandi monyekerize, mabadize omuhulimi, orunyoro, orunku manyakorongi. Ni inkora omu Department Ebiacarance, bagheeta Carance Department. Omumbarara mono, tumanyaya tutani itage ya Bank of Uganda. Kani itage edio, kuruga katiwa liitaka Carance Center, chonkabi yebenu tulieta Bank of Uganda Carance Branch. Nikyekimo ha ekio korora ho, ha Carance Department ekio kora omu Bank of Uganda. Tu kidakuma nyaya, Carance Center egie, rudi Bank of Uganda Branch yaitue rimumbarara mono, kuvanti niye hereza, e banka, eze biyamaguzi, sente. Ne banke eze biyamaguzi, rudi Kamasho Bank, obuzetaga kuweki ya hosente zigianakaha, ha branch ya Bank of Uganda. Omuli mogo, gurugira ha osobosi, rudi mandate, e ya Bank of Uganda, e yokuvanti nyo, e ikirizi wa yonka, omu hyangali etulinda ya Uganda, kutera e sente eza shillings. Kande sente ezo, ziri omurujunge tu ekiweta ligotenda rundi, iwe akuba nasasurua e ivanja, ohambirizi wa kuiki za sente ezo, kakoba ori awanakoraki, nasasura e ivanja ahaliwe. Bosama mon tuondiwe na aikirizwa, hansiya mateka ga Uganda kutera sente, okuiya ho, Bank of Uganda, kando obank of Uganda nerabam kitoongere kaya yo, ekia Carance Department. Hansiya omuli mogo, ogua hairo e Bank of Uganda kutera sente, itue abantu aboli kiro, tuwanitunihiraki, tuwan tunihira kuiki wa ho, bokonyeziki, rundi, busagikiki, hansiya omuli mogo kutera sente. Ekio kubanza, tu kira kunihira, ntie sente za Bank of Uganda zera atera. Akwani yonki ikirizi wa kuzutera, e inakutera sente, ezikutumara itue, nka abantu, nebi etago biya itu, ebi kurugamu ki, e itungo, rundi amatungo. Kakuru mono, ebi etago biya wina kuwanikoraki, nibizaro, rudi nibisasurua, niburugamu, e itungo. Boku wena ekietago, ekitakurugamu itungo, hateke kibakitakswa ra koraki, kusasurua, kandi banka tekiteka, moteka teka yaya wana koraki, netera sente. Ekindi, tuwan tunihira, ntie sente ezo Bank of Uganda zera atera. Omubuingi buazo, kanti zidjakubani soora kuchwe buamu, omumehendo, ekutsobo desakuan titrahi, trasora kuweki ya ho, e biyamaguzi omubuingi, rundi ombutaito buaviyo. Ekinku manisano kerinti, Bank of Uganda tejagiende etere emitwari etano yonka. Chonka ya okutera, opa remitwari etano, akemitwari eviri, akomutwaro, akenkumitaano, kumi vidiro kumi, ne koini inkokutuzimanire. Ekio kitu konyera, kuranti borayenda kuweki ya ho, ekinto omubuingi, kantuariha keokorora ho ekia mata. Borayenda kuenda gura lita za mata ikumi, literia kumi vidi viviri, osa gura eritezo ikumi, no ekuesa akabura komutwaro, kemitwaro eviri. O borayenda gura eriteemu, rudi hafulita, kando yajwena orukumi, kuweki ya ho e hafulite egio. So, kyekimo hamigaswekiya Bank of Uganda ekie fwayo kuranti yahikiya, ahaliwe akwenda kuwe yambisa, e sente. Ekindi, ekiva nikinihira omu Bank of Uganda, kurugamoli abantu abakoesa sente abantu aboli kiro, kivante sente ezo zinakuwa nyonjo, kandi ziri hona. Tizidjakubamba raha no honka, chonka na alukunjedi zidjakubayo, nakaramoja zidjakubayo, nahoyma zidjakoraki, zidjakubayo. Omukulengo kuranti sente ezitukuate itue kwate aboli kiro nyonjo, Bank of Uganda ekio kora, e fwayo kuranti boli kiro, e sente estari nyonjo, zira gure rudi zitemukire, ezi hayo mkatari, egare sente skoraki, e nyumez. Kandi omutwa aboli kiro, o judanza wa awe, hakigende yereke kiesente nyonjo, kiri sente ezo zikuate kurungi, otasteko makara, rundo mbisavo, rundi kuzifunya funya ekiteta kisi. Aho tuatukiza wina zavayitu ka Bank of Uganda, na yeo mutwa aboli kiro, wasorakuwa antwea kuweki ya ho, wa waike okozere kuranti wa okase sente zikele. Ekindi, mwanimu, mutwa abikaba nanehia, ntie sente za Bank of Uganda zera atera, zidjakasente ezikuesigika, ntihado ra baraze kuera, otazina okoraki, okuruki ya guruki. Ekigende yereka Bank of Uganda kikiriza neteka, oburoroa ho, omu sente ezebe turukize, iwo mutwa abikewo sakwe yambisa, kawaka sente ezikire, ha sente, ezitakire, rundi ezikia kueta, eze bicipori.
Hawa kaire?
They say in life, everything happens for a reason. Her absence today has enabled people like me to sit near the DG. These are opportunities that sometimes aren't called for, but they come and you must use them. Very quickly, let me just speak as Patrick, the Director of Communications, and say that it's always a pleasure to be here in Barara, and especially to the leadership of the district. Some of us, by the nature of our jobs, we move around this country. When I already see and your team, let me put it on record, if no one has told you, that Barara bears all the hallmarks of what a city should actually be. I was driving around last night, the streets are well, the infrastructure is good. I compare it to some of the cities where I come from. You start a journey on a road and everything ends abruptly, the tarmac ends, the lights ends. Others, there is nothing. Congratulations, Barara, this is beautiful. That's what a city should be. In ten minutes, I can tell you the story of DPF by first asking a question. How many of you before today however heard about the Deposit Protection Fund of Uganda? Just by show of hands. I think I still have a job. Less than one-eighth of the audience has heard about the DPF. Now, ladies and gentlemen, very briefly, the concept of deposit protection and deposit insurance is not anything new. It has been around since nineteen thirty-three, when the first deposit insurance system was established in the US. Fast forward, this concept has grown, and the government of Uganda, obviously with the technical advice from the central bank and the global position, felt it wise that deposit insurance, because of its uniqueness, needs to grow out and become an agency of its own. So, DPF is actually a government agency, currently autonomous, but its life and its umbilical cord started off with the central bank. It was previously a unit under the central bank, and now we are standalone, primarily to do three or four things. First and foremost, to ensure that there is sufficient public awareness about what we do. On that note, as a fund, we are very appreciative to you DG and to you for the platform you give us to enable the public to get to know what DPF is and what we do. Secondly, in so doing and whatever we do, we are expected to contribute to stability in the financial sector by building confidence in the public to ensure that they move their money from the unorthodox ways of keeping it to the formal financial system. That confidence in the financial system is what leads to stability in the sector. Because money under your bed is not as useful as money in circulation. And so, we think that as DPF, financial sector stability is one of our key aspects. And thirdly, as a fund, we should have been first, is we provide protection for anyone who is in a regulated financial institution. Now, the regulated financial institutions have been mentioned here several times. Those that are licensed and regulated by the Bank of Uganda. If you have an account with them, the DPF provides for you protection of up to ten million Uganda shillings. Now, I'm letting that sink in because usually the very first question is, what happens if I have more than what? More than ten million? The answer is coming, and the answer is very simple. First off, deposit insurance as a global trend focuses on what we call bottom of the pyramid, the middle income people, who, if a bank were to collapse, the net impact on them would probably be very devastating. And that means that probably many of you here may not be in that category because you are either multi-banked, you have more than one account, or something. But the majority of the Ugandans that we are speaking to are actually in the region of ten million and below. With that threshold, we cover up to ninety-eight percent of depositors. Anybody who has an account in this country, in a regulated financial institution, at the ten million shillings, ninety-eight percent of you are covered. Why? Because the majority of us depositors in this country have ten million shillings and what? I always challenge people to say, this is something very easy to verify. If you have a phone, check your bank balance, see how much is there. We largely withdraw salary twice. First one goes and sorts debts of haji, market fees, the second one. By the third, withdraw while you're living, what's? Majority of Ugandans actually have far less than even the ten million. So, the threshold is not only sufficient, but also it is based on regional benchmarks. Okay, so ultimately, for those who have more than ten million, the central bank, that is the regulator of the sector, usually either is a liquidator or appoints a liquidator. What that means is when a bank is closed, DPF will come and give you ten million. If you had twenty million, the remaining twenty million will be given to you at the end of the liquidation process. So, you actually are not supposed to lose out. The only difference is that DPF comes in within ninety days as per law, but ultimately, every depositor is supposed to get what is due to them. Now, for us as DPF, in such occasions, we usually appeal to the depositors and the public to do three major things as I wrap up. Number one, first and foremost, you need to update your information with your financial institution. Your national ID, alternative bank account, a mobile number registered in your names. Banks have been closed, institutions have collapsed. Recently, EFC, you had, has been taken off the shelves, and we have actually been in the process of paying out those depositors. Part of the challenge has been that somebody comes and the telephone number is different, and verifying that depositor becomes such a challenge. So, issue number one, wherever you can, when you change your numbers, telephone and so on, please update your information. Issue number two, know your bank. As already mentioned, you walk into an institution simply because it was registered as a bank. And there is nothing like evidence in anywhere to prove that it's properly regulated. So, take it upon yourself to confirm. Every financial institution is required to display that license that the central bank issues. If you can't see it, walk to the person at the customer service and say, can I confirm, where is your license? You have a right to do. Thirdly, in addition to updating your information and knowing about your bank, we request that depositors as much as possible should avoid listening to rumors because rumors can be very terrible. And lastly, take your money to an institution that you're guaranteed is well-regulated. Should anything go wrong, you are protected. Ultimately, in life, everything you do, you anticipate a scenario where things can go bad. Same for your financial management. Should things go bad, Deposit Protection Fund is on hand to come and give you at least the initial cushioning to adapt in the event of closure. I submit, ladies and gentlemen.
Weybadi mno, Patrick Ezaga, Kurugam Deposit Protection Fund of Uganda. Abantu bambarara, atin tuzamo bibuzo questions. Kokatra kabulu ze bibuzo, kuva ijuki zangu muina program, kandi program egera ka box ka black, akabeta QR code. So, boku vanu itaga kutuhereza feedback, rudi kutugambira omusomo mulingo guba ire. Iha yesimi ya awe, ora wena ho internet rudi data, oskaningaka box saako, then osobale kuba no tutugambira omusomo mulingo guba ire. Ora botainna esimu, bundu inesimi ya sima tuite itainna ho data, oksobora kuzesa orupa praru nu, oruroho ekigambro evaluation. Kandi haro ho abantu wa Bank of Uganda, abakura bamu empapura ezune bazikusarosa, duijuzee kurungi, rudi hapegem, then tujaku ziku ya ho, Kennedy, renyu makula akuraba mnasarosa empapulezi, na abantu abani kurugam Bank of Uganda, ni koto sobale kuete hereza, omusomo mulingo guba ire. Deputy Governor, with your permission sir, we are going into the Q and A session. E bibuzo, oksobora kubuzo mirunde, ebi rokubanza, ojakuani komokono gua awe, tujakuletu a microphone, na ambero oli, then okaguzee kaguzu. Konka wat, waafuna microphone, otugambire izinariya awe, then ine kaguzu. Kandi tuaksabire monda kaguzee kaguzu, kim ekikuru mono habo obuire, kandi ekiamasana, oradeki ire, ni koto malize program, tuzehaki amasana. Then, option ya kabiri, oksobora khandika. Already tuinabantu abira bahandikire, okubanza, Ali Alexander, nja kubisoma quickly, then imbe deputy governor, deputy governor, no aku jaku aloke tingarundi kuereza abaragaru kamu. Alexander says, "Thank you for today's engagement with us." Question, agricultural loans have faced several challenges, especially in recovery. This is attributed to environmental stroke-climatic changes that have led to changes in seasons. What has Bank of Uganda done to ensure environmental sustainability in Uganda too? Does Bank of Uganda have a department responsible for environmental sustainability? How do you rate the role of Bank of Uganda in ensuring sustainability of our environment? That is Alexander. The second one was already answered by Alex, I'll chant, but I can just read for record purposes. We have been hearing about Bitcoin, Bitcoin mining, OneCoin, digital money, ETC. All of these have been in Uganda. Does Bank of Uganda know about them? I think Alex answered that question. So, those are the written questions. We have so far Deputy Governor. Unau give you an opportunity to kuenda kubahereza, omogisa pole ija, o nyambe, onkonyero rubase microphone, na Kennedy ulby akupi jakuana sorosa, written questions ebi handikirwe. So, tujakuanza tuereze, abantu bataan uvakaguzu, then itugarukem.
Weybadi mno kasevo. My question is on raw saturation of raw currency with raw domination. Last night, I wanted to buy something in Web Corner, and I ended up going into, say, three shops to get change, to get the balance. They were telling me that they don't have, I should have actually have raw currency, I mean currency with raw domination. So, is it a deliberate measure to squeeze us? Then two, is on issue of agricultural loans. According to me, agricultural loans tend to benefit people who are aware of. For example, somebody is having a ranch, then he tells you that he's going to threaten his cows. You visit him or her, he's having land. At the end of the day, after giving him a loan, he diverts, much as in his position to do what? To pay the loan. Then at the end of the day, when you look also at the commercial banks, they have the minimum amount of money if you're going for an agricultural loan. They will say that if you want an agricultural loan, you should have, you should take more than twenty million. And then you look back at your capacity. The president is advocating for a four A commodity. Now, with my four A commodity, can I take a loan of, say, twenty million? But if they can actually reduce on the amount and say, so long as it's agricultural loan, probably take like say ten, which is within your means.
Weybadi sevo. Abene bibuzo manike mikono. Emikono mugiboi ne. Hatio waafuna microphone, okabuzee bibuzee vikira halichimwe, waba waafere zabo bo nabakire mikono. So, boku tunga microphone izinawe, ne kikaguzu kimu kionka, habo obuire kikira yobukuru, then ni togenomais.
Thank you very much, MC. I'm called Bam Bantrachi George. Before I pose my question, Mr. Wabulia Andrew Phillips, could you be the one OB King's College Budo Africa House? Because I was at Budo King's College from seventy-nine to eighty-five. So, you are my OB. My memory is working. I was senior monitor. I have a concern. Bank of Uganda, I thought was an institution to oversee and monitor all financial transactions in the country. We have had Ponzi schemes like D9. We are talking of cryptocurrency. But they come and operate months and months, even they go even for years. And they extort a lot of money from innocent Ugandans. I am a victim, but I'm not going to share the disappointment I got. But we lost millions of money. Even we took our concerns to Central Police Station in Kampala, we registered our cases, but there was no address, we were not really helped at all. I thought Bank of Uganda should be part of your roles to stop such Ponzi schemes before they extort exorbitant monies from innocent Ugandans. Kabatu ibire, imo Bank of Uganda tumutuyamba, vataka tuibire.
Bank of Uganda tujakuva yamba, weybadi mno.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yes.
Na inshaba antum, akusenga mno angurukina ngochubuzo cha uchika, cha ndiki. Habo kubwira himuzo kika, usha angotachi, tachi ndabe mikono, nugu handiko, butachi, muri nyendu mukaza hati.
Then, tuinabastafe nyuma, rafa akurabi ruji, Kennedy motongisa, bakura bamuni basorosa, bekakuzee bebi handikire. Moku baba namobahebe kaguzo viyari.
Weybadi mno kasevo. Mbanyetana ndawala Farida, branch manager, Finance Trust mbara branch. Weybadi kutueto mushomoku, onkana ariba, mutatufa honga Kamasho Bank, abadiaha. So, ntuaro mndishoku wa gambira, loan zone zuba agaba, om Finance Trust ntuzagaba. I hear ten ti itue roho, zonan kokuwa azagamba, ni ntuaro mndishoku wa la marketing, itinku wasakujenderaha, rowasakuija.
Kari, weybadi Finance Trust, abakwenda kuma nyevikira ho, tuinabanksa he, matiroza ten tiza abu, try zomusomo oze yo, obuzee obabuzee bekakuzo viyaka.
Thank you very much. I want to take this opportunity to organize all the financial institutions in the house. Please stand up if you are from a financial institution licensed by Bank of Uganda. See, thank you very much. We shall come the tenth.
Director Communication has guided that we must know their names, just your name and institution.
I'm called Nanda Wala Farida from...
Just stand up and we bring a microphone.
Hello everyone, I'm called Shovik Pandey from Bank of Baroda.
Yes, good afternoon everyone, Kakonji Konarias, Barack Uganda Bank Limited.
Yes, good afternoon, Emmanuel Thomasje, Premier Credit, Barara.
Good afternoon, I hear the question is my name, and I'm from United Bank for Africa.
Muaseba mutabantu mwe, amazina nibana dasi mwe, ni inkora na United Bank for Africa. Turiyaha eru gurwaruka ma yembegent.
Yes, good afternoon, nimbatanjera mwe na, amazina ni ye konu wamanya, Housing Finance Bank, Barara.
Good afternoon everyone, Toheru Isaac is my name, from Diamond Trust Bank Uganda.
Good afternoon everyone, I'm Oichar Virot from DTB.
Good afternoon everyone, Gero Batalinda is my name, Stan Big, Barara.
Good afternoon everyone, my name is Ronaldo Esiji, branch manager, Big Bank, Bara Branch.
Good afternoon everyone, my name is Steven Nkwaasa from Bank of Africa.
Didas Viarohanga, Chitwamba bamwe sakho.
Mathi Ramta, Tamsima Godfrey is my name, Opotinte Bank.
The next question is coming from here, please, Co-MC.
Just a minute as we conclude with the introductions of SFIs.
Chionchejime Buana, Centenary Bank.
Next question?
Weybadi, owa tebe kansum, omushomoku, tuaxemeruwa mno ngan kavantwa ankore, cha tu koraje, echubuzo cha ange.
Echubuzo cha ange. Muryono mutidira Bank of Uganda ekac extending a small business recovery fund. Kokuzom banks, no akwaini nevrichi, mwecho nechi varukwende. Omungokweriza edeeya Bank of Uganda kwa tinene yavo. Bakwerize yavo, kandi bakuetoro ruse. Echochukuretera, omowan ondemiyonu nka bisatu, bakwanka, nka makumiya ata, nunarunka. Nchukureteru bundop tashashura, credit reference ite siskara, kando muntukuba inventor, in the inventory program of the nation, nechintchukume. Mweni mwe kaba Bank of Uganda, mtirohobriyochi, kurangmwareta fund, nekikabantu. Aboko abariyabi inesa, abo tu yakwenda kuthezani.
Whoever receive. Paul, tufunye yavantu babiri boonka, theni tu, so maybe kaguzze ebihandikirwe.
Whoever receive. Togumedja stasi, mui shkurovejiza. Mwe were abu mushomogwerizo. Itu enka yustu inobuzzu bu, bakatujirangu barre, ta sente za yusra ivru, ombanka. Iwabi rohika, washava ro nejo. Bakubuzza abuzachi twaro obuire. Echi ndechinkuena ngumutuyambem, terezemo, sa sarabakire. Banka tuzuktuera sente, mwiire zutukwantuenda. Kandi bamane rendingi, echomukura muryono murwana sesecho, bonu batohu ire, burukura huka, kuthe sente. Haragamebe zemukteka tekan, kokutukoma vrizo. Nacho mterezemo, banka kizarabe, nuzu tuheriza sente zutra wchizi. Kandi pasente iba kutugambera, tuyoba kutherere zahu. Kokuzomo, mbakujirangu, ntsapukera ri, shirinji shatu, ninga shibshatu. Kunka waza giitagiitakushosuraro nejo, ushaanganzukwato mdeshinjerushanzu.
Echubuzo sevo.
Bank of Uganda mchijende ho, mchitereriza.
Okay, whoever there. Paul, just the last one, then we respond.
Amazi na jode mhumuza, omushubizom central market. Tu inechizuvitu abachare, hatu akakozere kuhikahare. Kokujenda washamba small loans, for example, haro banka bakuyo big charges. Bantumwecho nacho mchirewe, bakstha nanka yakafuna. Mweni yavrim, mchigande ho, twaf.
So we can first take this set of questions and we shall be coming back.
Thank you very much. These questions are very, very interesting. Hello, I think, I think, let me even stand. I am very happy that we have checked which banks have reported. Because we invited all banks and the response will be good. But let me start with the lady, the one who talked about charges. I would like to direct it first to the director, Commercial Banks. Then I can supplement, give it to Huntington.
Thank you, Deputy Governor. I don't think I would be the most suited person to respond to this. I would rather throw it to the bankers and explain why they are charging, the charges they do.
Okay.
Any bank specifically, can she mention the bank?
Which bank do you bank in, madam? I can see you all seeming to say all the banks.
Anyone from Finka here? Stan Big.
Okay, let me answer that question. I think, I'm going to assume I understand the mamas. The mamas is, some of you don't want to disclose because of confidentiality, correct? Now, every month or every three months, Bank of Uganda spends money telling you the different charges every bank charges. No one comes and asks why do we do that? This complaint came first that people didn't know the charges. For example, every time people would go to deposit, the charges would vary. You go to withdraw, the charges vary. You inquire about your balance, the charges vary. There is a team in Bank of Uganda that looks at charges. And we publish them. You know, when you go to the shop, and I'm going to give you an example. If I go to Serena, or let me say Triangle, and I ask for a bottle of soda, the price will be, will it be the same? If I go downtown or to one of Kyosik, the lady will give me at 1,000. The reason we publish these rates is you should know. First of all, we start from there. If you know Bank X is very expensive, please go to another bank. Bobo manyinti Bank Vasera, Munonga, you go to another bank. There is something I think the lady is trying to say is, maybe they are charging which the banks are charging you, that maybe they have not told us as Bank of Uganda. So you go and you know that you're not supposed to be charged. But when you go and ask, the charges are high. Madam, I would like you, if you get time, or any of you, just write down and say, "I want to confirm that I took a loan of 100,000 and the bank charged me 50,000." Okay? And you complain to us. We can then ask the bank to explain. But I think I understand what she's saying. You go and ask for a loan of 1 million and the charges are more, correct madam? Isn't that so? Yeah. Please, we have branches here for you to submit complaints. And if you don't, we cannot know. So if you feel you've been charged unfairly, right? We shall keep your name confidential, but we shall go and ask your bank. For example, now we know that without showing the lady's name, is that Finka has that issue. So the guy who supervises is here. We shall ask them those questions. That's why we're here today. Thank you very much. There was an issue of the loan takes long and rates are different. People take you in circles. Who wants to take it from that side? Okay. The problem is the banks here. I don't, I don't know who I should put on this. Can I start with, which bank by the way? Who asked that question? Yeah, I'm going to ask, I just wanted to know. Who asked the question? I'm going to give it to Centenary, but who asked this question of them? I think it was the gentleman at the back. Yeah? What bank do you bank with? Which bank do you bank with? Which one? Which, the question you said, when you go to ask for a loan, they decide to offer you their loans, they take time. I know you spoke in Runyangkora, I told you by the time I leave here, I will know how to speak it. They take time and then they give you different rates and things. Was it you? I want us to get the question clearly. Because today we have to address what you want. Who asked that question? Housing Finance. There is someone from Housing Finance, I think they were seated that side. Okay? Someone from Housing Finance is there. Take the microphone to him. You have one minute.
Just tell us, how long, how long does it take you to issue?
Thank you. I think I wasn't there by then, but currently, the maximum period we can give a loan is 14 days. Depending on mortgage registration. But where is a, is a current client, is a repeat borrower, mortgage is already registered, it takes only five days to close a loan. So that very gentleman should come back and process the loan with me. I'm very perfect now.
You know, I'm smiling. I want you to give it to his competitor, Centenary is here. Maybe you may tell us it takes one minute.
Thank you. Good afternoon everyone. At Centenary Bank, our processes are very clear and straight. We display the process periods for fresh borrowers that have never borrowed from us. Micro segment, they take three days to five days to process the loan. Then for repeat borrowers that have been with us for some time and with very good credit history, we process them in between one and three days. For salary loans, it is strictly one day unless otherwise. Then for loans, SMEs and corporates, those one take a bit of time, but we normally give it two weeks. And when it is with certain technicalities, it can go beyond. But that's precisely what it is. But we request that you always give us feedback regarding the delays because we are not in direct control with the teams in the field. They can maybe delay you for one reason or another. But we always emphasize timelines of processing these loans. Kindly give us the feedback and we shall always have you in time. Thank you.
You know, he is saying this in front of his regulator. If he doesn't comply like what he has said, send us a note, we'll send him the bill. Okay? Don't be shy. If you feel you've not been treated well, come to the Bank of Uganda, please. I'm begging you. You just write a note, you know, he's just made a comment in front of Director Commercial Banking. For us, we find, we don't go on social media or press, we send it to the bank. So you complain, we investigate, we can handle. There was a question about Small Business Recovery Fund. You go and ask for it and someone takes you in circles. Where is Alex? Yes, do you want to talk about it or you want to give it to Huntington? You can come and use this one.
Thank you very much, Deputy Governor. The question of people requesting for Small Business Recovery Fund or SCF, they approach the bank and the bank, you know, rotating circles, taking long without helping the borrowers. Indeed, Mr. Deputy Governor, wherever we go, this is a concern. Ugandans approach commercial banks, but for one reason or the other, you find that they are not being helped. Bank of Uganda has done a lot of sensitization. People are aware of the viability of these credits, SCF and SBRF. But somehow, the conduit through which we give this money to the public is still wanting. Now what we are doing right now, I want to confirm to you that Management Bank of Uganda has continuously engaged the management of the PFIs, the participating financial institutions. Recently, we had a meeting in Serena with all the CEOs of the commercial banks. And we are telling them the feedback we get from you. And they committed themselves. Mr. Deputy Governor, I want to assure you that they even agreed, saying that going further, they are going to be telling Bank of Uganda, their loan portfolios at the percentage of the agricultural credit facility or Small Business Recovery Fund that is incorporated into their loan portfolio. I think this one is going to help us. Because if you say you have lent out 3 billion or 4 billion, how much, what fraction is SCF and what fraction is SBRF? Because we want this money to reach you. We know and we are aware of this challenge, but Bank of Uganda is not seated. We are seeing as to how we can help you. We engaging the PFIs and soon you'll definitely get this money as hard as possible. But if the person who asked this question, if you can be specific, which bank treated you like this? And one of, maybe that banker is around here, they would also come up and tell us the reasons why. Because we are operating these facilities under the memorandum of agreement that was signed by the PFIs, Minister of Finance and the Bank of Uganda. I so submit.
Before you go, you're going to ask also a question. But I think the gentleman, his point is very valid. And I still encourage, he doesn't know what the limit is. So if you feel that a bank is taking you in circles, you tell them you're not in circles. Just come to our branch, write your name, write your complaint, leave it at Imbarara Branch. We have people who will handle it. We have a complaints handling desk and we shall address it, okay? If you don't feel satisfied, then you write to the Deputy Governor's office, he will respond. Alright? So we don't want you to think that we are not sensitive. If you feel you're being confused, write to us. There was a question about SCF loans benefiting only those who are well off and banks offering a minimum. So I come, I want 2 million, the bank says you go away. Me I want, I only lend 20 million. Is that the question which was there? So you want, yeah, please, if you can address that one.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Deputy Governor. Such complaints have also reached our desk. Indeed, many farmers are crying. Because, but what I want to, to put it clear is that SCF is not only for the big borrowers or big farmers. SCF is for every farmer in this country. If you can remember my presentation, where we have even brought the initiative of giving you money without a registered corralto and a broker allocation. Somebody getting 20 million. I think it is an endeavor and it is an indication to you that everybody is being brought on board as far as SCF is concerned. It may be easier for the big farmer to borrow simply because maybe he'll be having registered corralto and that kind of thing. And you talked about diversion of funds. That somebody, he has a ranch, he gets 200 million, then you give him the money and then he diverts the funds and then uses it in something else. It is possible, but the commercial banks give Bank of Uganda reports on a quarterly basis. According to memorandum of agreement, they are supposed to follow the money and see exactly, we gave you 200 million, what have you used it for? Is it for agriculture? What have you used? So where we find that the loan was not properly used, the commercial bank is supposed to inform Bank of Uganda. And what we are now also doing is that the Minister of Finance is appointing independent bodies that go, they don't even go through us, they don't even go through commercial banks. They go direct the farmers and ask them several questions. So EPRC is doing that. But what we are saying is that everybody is in for it. But where there is diversion of funds, the commercial banks are supposed to give us that report. And once it is discovered, then there are some penalties that Bank of Uganda can do. But I want to share with you, with the permission of the Deputy Governor, the toll-free number that you can call Bank of Uganda. This is about SCF specifically and Small Business Recovery Fund. If you have gone to a bank... If you have gone to a bank to borrow money and you insist that you want SCF and for them, they are telling you, they want to give you a different loan. And kindly do me a favor. When you go to the banking hall, don't say, "I want an agricultural loan." No, be specific because they have similar products. You'll sell agricultural loan and they will give you theirs of thirty percent. Be specific, say, "I want agricultural credit facility managed by Bank of Uganda." You say that one that the government put in place to help the farmers. Once you leave this hall, you'll go outside there. We have a store there. They will give you a key document, key fax document, the brochure that has all the information as far as SCF is concerned and SBRF. In case you get any challenge in a commercial bank, kindly call this number. I think they read it to you, but they read it as general. But this is specifically for agricultural credit facility and Small Business Recovery Fund. It is zero eight double zero one double four zero double four. They read it to you. It will definitely come to our division and we shall have a conversation with you, register your complaint and then a follow-up will be made. I so submit.
I think, repeat it again. Some people might not have written. Repeat it again.
I repeat, the toll-free number. Zero eight double zero one double four zero double four. Once you have a challenge with SCF, SBRF, kindly call that number. We shall attend to you. I thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to address, yes, Mr. Bandrachi, I was in Budong. I was there. I'm a very big Budongian, so thank you very much. It's nice to see you. I really, and you are elder, so I'll stand up. You don't address your elders while seated. Thank you very much. You asked a question about Ponzi schemes. And this is one, when I was presenting, I told you, people have become very creative. Especially, I don't know whether it's a generation. These young people have become very creative. They come up with something and they tell you, like I gave an example. Someone tells you, "Give me a thousand dollars. Every week I'll give you two hundred dollars." The first two weeks, they give you two hundred, two hundred. After three weeks, they start telling you stories. I don't know, let me first find out from my team. Huntington, do you want to address it? Where people are receiving money? Or do you want to? Okay, pass it on. Remind them of your department and your name, so that they know.
Thank you, Deputy Governor. I'm Alex Achant from the National Payment Systems Department. Thank you for that question. It's not the first time we are getting such questions from the public. And I think it stems from the fact that in the financial sector, I think the Bank of Uganda has been longer than others. But I want to also assure you that there are other government agencies, just like Bank of Uganda, that support or supervise the financial sector. One of them is Capital Markets Authority and Uganda Microfinance Regulatory Authority. We have Insurance Regulatory Authority that handle different aspects. Now, the issue of Ponzi scheme has been there. From what you mentioned, but also there are some that have come in terms of cornering the public. If you don't have time to go to digital agriculture. One of them recently collapsed. You don't have time to invest in agriculture, but you have capital. Please inject your money, we will invest for you. That's a Ponzi scheme as well. We had one capital chicken that I think recently collapsed. The question for you who invested in it and therefore saying Bank of Uganda should have looked at it is what was the motive? Were you keeping your money safe or you trying to get a return? Did you check if they are supervised or not? Like, just like we've been saying, all institutions that are supervised by Bank of Uganda, there must be a license. In case it's not Bank of Uganda, there must be a license from Capital Markets Authority because they are responsible for mobilizing funds from the public and they license institutions that are supposed to do that. So the way I can answer is that the Bank of Uganda has gone out to the public to sensitize the public about these Ponzi schemes. We've issued public statements about the Ponzi schemes and told the public, be aware of it and don't invest if they are not regulated. We've done that and it's on our website. I think we've also put it in major social media. On cryptocurrency, I think I explained it earlier on. That as Bank of Uganda, the motive for which people are using cryptocurrency is not really as a means of payment. You won't tell me that you're using cryptocurrency to buy a matoke from the village. Most people are using cryptocurrency because they think, if I bought it for ten million today, after two days, I'll have twenty million. They desire for quick money. Unfortunately, you'll invest your ten million and tomorrow is zero and you have nowhere to run. If you called Bank of Uganda, because we've not licensed them and it's not a means of payment for that matter, we'll only ask you to report to police. By the time you start investigating with police, the gentleman or the investor is gone. We've seen different names. Digital Money, Crypto Money and all sorts of names. Now, the Bank of Uganda tries all the time to advise the public not to invest or not to look for very quick money because it's normally dangerous. If you invest in, you must invest in an institution that is licensed, either by Bank of Uganda or Capital Markets Authority for that matter in the case of cryptocurrency or in the case of other investments, sorry. Now, we work also with other regulators like Capital Markets to ensure that we sensitize the public about this in Ponzi schemes. But we also encourage you to always call Bank of Uganda to confirm if you're not sure of whatever you're investing in. But the bottom line is, quick money is very dangerous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alex. I just want to, because today is a day of educating and some of you might not know, I've worked also in private sector. I have seen very smart schemers. There are four questions you have to ask. Whenever someone asks you, "I am doing this business", ask a question, "Are you licensed?" Just ask the simple, "Are you licensed?" Who in the market is regulating? There are things which you can ask and I always give an example of land. If you're going to buy land, can someone just, you find on the street, tell you, "This is my land, I'm selling it two million" and you buy? You don't. And these people have what we call psychology kind of manipulation. If you don't buy now, you're going to lose, okay? There was one which is famous. Someone is walking, has an envelope, they throw it down and you pick it up. When you pick it up, it says, "Not the money was more. You bring the money you have and I check." And then they swap it. So today, Abamu Kanjogre Murganda, Mulimwa Avantu, Ngayinacha Akutunza, Bouza, Ania Kutoala, Oina License. Boba Toina License, Ania Kfuga. Ochidava? Ati, Avantu Vanu, these people are very smart. They will look for a person you know. Omuntu Gomanyi, Akugambi, Alex Oyote, Yaguzi, Gochari Indachi. Asasule Alex, Ati Guakolichi, Afere. So I'm asking you, are you licensed? Ania Kutoala, okay? Chitongo Lechi, Chokoliram, Bachi Wandi Sa. Because wogenda no tandi koku lave e bintu bino. Osobolo kweza anganga, Wandi e wonyeze e bintu binci. Now, let me move to the other question and it is on the low circulation of low currency. Hassan, you want to take that question? Someone is saying he went to a shop, they tell him there is no change. Do you want to answer that question? Can you give it to Hassan? What currency department?
Otiemono, Agwera Governor. Turo zere genti obigina nizwa Bank of Uganda, buri hakute ra sente. Omuwangi itwe abanya gando kutuku seetaga mu, kusikira, hamerimu, e itukora ekurugamo amatungo. Obigina nizwa wa kabiri, buri bokoranti esente zo, zihikire hona omuihanga, hali amatungo kali, hali zikue etagiwa. Mbalize gya rukungiri, nyibazahakaramoja, narua na hoima nambaare. Chonka, Bank of Uganda ya kusangatena etagi rukungiri. Sente zida ikazita rukungiri. Zijakuika rukungiri, rudi hoima, nizidava omuka Masho Banks. So Kamasho Banksi, Bank of Uganda ena matagi ikumi omuihanga, Mbarara, Kavare, Toro, Arua, Nserikuli, Guru, Lira, Mbare, Jinja, Nahano Mataka. So Bank of Uganda ekwata sente zenu, omomi hendo yonakuru garukumi, kuika mituare etanu, nemhende ya koini, ya za koini. Nekwata sente niztuaro matagi yago. Hati Kamasho Bank zo ziki ngura matagi, hali Bank of Ugandaeri, kani zongeni ziki ngura matagi, hali Bank of Uganda etakoraki, etakuika. So Bank of Ugandaeri Toro, bati terinka, Masindi. Kamasho Banksi zijaki ngura branchesi, Masindi. Bank of Ugandaeri hano Mbarara, baitu teri Ruampara. So Kamasho Bank zijaki ngu etaginkaha, Ruampara. Bank of Ugandaera kreta sente zretanu Mbarara. Kamasho Bankaziye hano Bank of Uganda estuare, hali Bank of Uganda etakoraki, etakuika. Hati itwe abanya Uganda, nitu etugena omuka Masho Banka nitzizi hiyo, nitzituara Revie Kona, nitzituara Kakoba, nitzituara Sanga. Kusikira omuontahi ya itu. Buabu juna nizwa wa Kamasho Bank, kuranti oboganze nijakuhi hiyo sente, te kwaire mituare etanu yonka. Chenka, chonka ekwaire, emhendo ya okaini ekwaire etanu, hagojia kuitaga kutuara brano himba, nka milioni, tojia kuitaga kuii mba sente zisikotereki, zizi mbi. Chonka nina kuranti teriremo, noborukumi, no wemituari, no wemkumi biri, no wemkumi etanu. Hagojia kwena kure chpaya amai zii, kani yonegura sente zinga, siri yi rukumi. So eno feedback e tuongire, tuijagenda tuwi, tupase muna Kamasho Banka za ito omu Mbarara mono. Turo re, chenje no zigukituara, ombu etago obaba ni Mbarara. Obakituara, baina, bureme ziki, kuranti bakoraki, bagiki hali avantu. Chenge togi na yonuwangi, tui na yonuwangi, kani kusikira mofeedbacke tuongire, tuijagenda tu havose Kamasho Banka zenu, ozezina oburemezi, kuranti za hakiya chenge, ahavantu. Chonka no kriaki riki tiyo, tuijagala katuonge yamui itwe amani kuranti Kamasho Banka tuzo ngire chenge, obakoba izi kutabara sente kuru ga, haitage riya itu, eri Mbarara.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, this issue of change, intuchineni nyo. I'm going to give you two scenarios and I saw one. A lady, omukchala yadi nyatax, and I'm giving you a live example. It was from one stage to another stage and she's supposed to pay two thousand. And the lady decided to take out fifty thousand. And this was in the morning at seven. Now, I want you to put yourself in the position of the taxi tot. You understand what I'm saying? Is that sometimes these people of change, we are the ones who are not being reasonable. If you know that my fare is two thousand, make, you can pass by a shop or a supermarket and say, "I would like some change" and you get the change, okay? Then there is the other part where people are crooked. They have failed to sell their sweets. So you give them money and says, "Ah, I don't have change." But you can take a what? A sweet. But I didn't come to buy a sweet. So sometimes, I would say it's a difficult question. For us, we provide the money. But in those two scenarios, I want you to imagine, what would you do as a person? So sometimes it's beyond us, but we need to work together. If you notice that in your area, there is a problem of change, write a small note, leave it at the branch. We have people that Hassan employs every month to try and check and we see whether the notes are clean or they are dirty. So I would suggest on that issue, we work together. The other question which we haven't answered is on environmental and sustainability and the role of the bank. I don't know whether Adam, you want to take it? Or Huntington, or I take it? Can I take it? Okay. We have a department in supervision and I'm very fortunate, I was talking to my colleague who's Executive Director of Supervision. We are slowly in the stages of introducing some of these new, I would call them new ways of doing business. So if you talk to a local and you tell them sustainability, I would like someone to help me in Ruyankori, what would be sustainability? Okay? Some things is we are trying to see how do we protect the environment, okay? So we are working slowly. We're not going to say only lend people who are doing activities that don't destroy the environment. For example, abakula obuchupa, oba plastic. Buri dangerous for the environment. So if I come up netugamba, abo ave wola sente ngabagenda kola obuchupa wa plastic, temova wa sente, te chiveda chavunani ziva. Na ye, tukola gananava antu netugamba kale, okolo obuchupa wa plastic. Na ye, weva malobo kozisa, mubukola mutya. Tusobolo tioku elo ngosanti, obutonde wensite mubonoona. So tuli mukchite saako, abalala bazungu bavi tandika, ne katuwa nutechidava kutuka. So we na kubuli ranti tuchikola, njakuwanga ankulimba. Ne wenyankubuli ranti tetuchiro zako, na omba ankulimba. So tutanso chiro zako, era Bank of Uganda na yo, egamba me bitu fune departmenti, owa akatundu, akasobolo chitunuri rako. So environmental sustainability, as Bank of Uganda, we are discussing with the commercial banks, how we can do it. So I would leave it at that. Now, we are going to take a round of questions, but I understand some of you asked that you came specifically about treasury bills and treasury bonds. Is that correct? Yeah? Okay. I know everyone is looking at me from Bank of Uganda. So let me talk about treasury bills and treasury bonds. And briefly, because this topic can take an hour. So what is a treasury bill and a treasury bond? Abasi ngababu uza, chiche, treasury bill or treasury bond? Government of Uganda, buiwanga ekunganyze mi solo, ne jitawera. Esalawo, ne ye wola moba antu. Mukwe wola moba antu, ekua echidu chevaita treasury bond over treasury bill. Chevaita. Echa ukana kutreasury bond, ne treasury bill. Iti treasury bill zil, period ya zo, ya one year and below. Treasury bond, be waru. Treasury bond be waro kuvaku mwa kagumu paka mia ka ana. Kanchitemo. Treasury bill government eve ye wola muba antu ne kugamba mpa sente injazi kudiza mumieze satu mieze mukaaga oba mwa kagumu. It borrows from you for one year or six months or three months. Treasury bill bo wola government okumale mieze satu. Sente zo ezitereka pake mieze satu ngajiwe deko ne kuwa interest. Chechimu ne mieze mukaaga ne mieze kumi nevi. So that is treasury bill. Treasury bond ekuola ko sente zonga wenyankugambi okuvaku mia kevi mia ke satu mia ke etanu mia ka kumi kumi ne etanu abidi abidi muetanu ana. Na yon buri mieze mukaaga ekuwayo ku ka interest. Bobanga wa wafuna treasury bond ku 10%. Buri mieze mukaaga ekuwako ka five no ukafuna. Kuwanga sente zo zigena kuvira wa? Wala. So treasury bonds zikuaka interest kone kajavu buri mieze mukaaga paka wevari wechina kola chi ngemiaka jiwe deko. Kati ruachi bank of Uganda iba gama kuteka sente mu treasury ne bill ne treasury bond. Many times tuko ata sente ne tuziteka mu bintunezifa. Many time kumbo ite winda retirement package jemu ujemu eroze zako. Kati ka mbavuli de story e mwe gendo basme sa treasury bill. Waro moami yaliye mia ka chinana. Na mpita mofisiye, I think it is na mpita mofisiye mia ka msaanvu ne mia ka mundaana kati. Na ngamba mtabani, abatabani bangi bangambiye, zino sente government ze mwa dekawade kasimo ngakoli de mia ka nzikoli dechi. Na ngamba mtabani wangangambiye ngulama yumba garrent. Omulala angambiye inti nziteke welu zikoli stocks. Omulala angamba nzituale tandikokola enkoko nunde. Kati mtabani baden boza tukoze tutya. Nemo gamba olimiaka chinana. Onosovolo kso loza abapangisa. Tasovola. Bo zikuata no zituale welu to manyani agendo kola chi welu. To ina control. Bo ziteka mu agriculture amani matono. So na ngamba kati mbadensa ba tukwate sente zinu tuziteka mu treasury bond. Na ngamba kati inkose ya treasury bondi treasury bill. Nemo gamba treasury bond inti ruachi kuwanga buri mieze mukaago dyaku funa angayochi akantu. Na ngamba kati inteka mu treasury bond okumala bangachi nemo gamba mia ka abidi na sekirira. Na ngamba zendichi naana. Oluza ngenda kuvira pakoa no mia ka chikumi eh oyagade okunjereka. Sitacho? Nemo gamba treasury bond ya mia ka abidi bagawa interest ya 16.5%. Bobo tademo eh mirion evinabi ofunye. Buri mwa kaba wakuwa mirion ninsanvu msaanvu. Ochiraba? Buri mieze mukaaga ofuna eh mirion asatu mobiri nechitundu. Obasa tu mwe mu nechitundu. Na ngamba ne do actually eh mirion asatu mukaaga nechitundu ziyali afuna. So mirion evinah zimbe nyumba oba kule nyumba. So na ngamba na ye mia ka abidi sidja kutuka yon. Nemo gamba to etaga kutuka yon. Chowe etaga kufuna cho liya buri naku. Bo funa mirion asatu mukaaga zo funa buri mieze mukaaga no zigabanyamo mukaaga buri mwezo funa mirion nimeka? Meka? Mukaga. Nemo gamba uliya mirion mukaaga mumuezi inti ne. So ne tuziteka mu. Na engolaba ngaa yesi so mukono agamba mm sidja kusovola. Ne kanchiteka mu. Na mboza ne sente zange government esovola gana kuzinziriza. Nemo gamba ati ruachi kuwanga government zetaga. Bo evanga government eina sente zimala ete sente indala. So ne twita eh zimukaaga sangha sente ngazidikuchi ku account nasoka na mpita mtabani jia. Sente nazidabi za tu si ne sente dala dala agamba ah sichika kasa. Kan kolecheki nzi jayo nzi kwate mungalo manyantichi zaangi. Nemo gamba tugende fenda. Najayo sente nazikuata mungalo na tunuli da. Na ngamba kati sente wamazicha. Nazizayo kuchi? Mu account. Na ngamba kati nazino zinfunye kan zikoli chi kan zize. Nemo gamba ne da. Sente zino zetuafunenga interest zi nakula abidi de miezichi? Mukaga. Ati buri mwezi uwengo okose sa mirion nimeka? Mukaga. Nemo gamba mu bank tutekeko limit toso akusuka mieze nimeka manya mirion muchi? Mukaga. Na ne yabo omukchala waga la nyosente. Nemo gamba ye oinokoli da mirion chi? Mukaga. Kuwanga tocha kola. You see? So omami onavada ya sente zinu paka one year ego duya ruala. Ne inga takola ne inga vlamube burundi taina chi ya chuka ku buri mieze mukaaga ofuna mirion zemeka? Asatu mukaaga. Sitacho? Akose nakula. Buya tuko okuruala ngabamutuala mudua aliro. And this is a very painful decision. Abana ve bamutuala mudua aliro. Wevamutuala mudua aliro. Ngabala va sente zino zikoli chi? Zija. I think azimulabi ri da. Eva gamba ah tonu na sente tumuze ye ka afirewa? Wakaa. Nembagamba ne da zino sente zee ya zikola kola chi? Kumulabi ri da. Na vedao eh mieze mukaaga ngachi mulabi ri chi? Sente zee. Paka mukama boyakola chi? Na mu yita. What has happened? Kati sente zee zichario abana bacha ina sente zibasovolo kutuara. Eda ne basigalanga bafuna sente ne vazeye gabanyamu oba ne bagavanachi? Obogaga. Ne zamukola chi? Zamuyamba. So my advice to you is learn from this example is that you can survive. You can live on a treasury bond. Bo wango ochali moto, I encourage you keep buying one year, I mean two years, three years. Oteka ya katono. Kan kubuli de kamba we example. Teka ye mituaro kumi buri week. At the end of the year, odyakufuni mirion etanu. Mo abidi. Ngatochi ulide. Sitake yon. So we mumbuza kutrejery build ne treasury bond mba wade lesson temugenajifuna one tuwalala. Kati mbadenge gala tutdeyoko bibuzo. Waro achibuze chira kuchino chenjoge deko? Mwenamusirise. Muri ngo moami oli mukama mu muse mbihebe. Amina.
Weware munonga DJ mu mwenngaro? Dennis Dennis Mohangi yaba wurze chibuzo nchuchmu cha bondi na bills. Ezekiel na weyava na wurze chibuzo nchuchmu cha bondi zina bills. Achitabaka rechere mevi. Mweyari munonga. Ebibuze viindi ntuzaksho mahewi mwe. Ah bobo buire. Ntuzakkaru kamobi che. Denneviindi omuavazu yon. Ntuzakwatu rechere radio cruise. Ebibu echora huru chibuza cha ochitagaru kamo hia? Ah ha otuninga ina radio cruise. Echibuza cha wanzakwanchi garu kamo. Esha katu etuzabagambre shortly. Ntuzakonfaminga esha histora jireho deyuntuzabagambra tushiria. Arua boza na ninyango tumukuma nyarujungu onkaba antubona bahandikomu arujungu. So mwenamua handikomu arujungu mwenana dekatu wesho mua arujungu rumu bahandikomu. What is the procedure of securing small business recovery fund? Which commercial banks in example give agriculture funds? Ebia ebia Ronad. Innocent atkunda niwachibuza cha ochija hanui. Tim ya banko Uganda shiriyaha nezak. Ebimwe ntuzakwakarukamatu shiriyaha ebimwe ntuzakwakamatu. Kuka kamari diu. Oguni mukisa. Mukisa niwachibuza cha ochija nchuchreba. Hanu haruka to anro weyadangun satisfied financial eteras trainer na boza chibuza chiriyaha financial eteras. Nasho ntuzakwachirukamo. Na ankunda El Dabes ichibuza cha wachichine hanu. Abamutu mwa teka umazina. Nini mamta teka umazina. Biar... Variamui variamui juka Felix ichibuza cha wachichine hanu. Yes. Tumuhirwe Veronica ichibuza chine. Clinton tumuhimbise cha kahu ichibuza cha we. Ambrose. Ambrose. Mfuni ichibuza cha wachika ho. Okay. Arua boza chibuzo weyadangustatai muzi. Startaimu zina DSTV nchachijinga sente inju munonga. Kamu asheka? Wahji? Tisha hanuya. Ba jangutisha hanuya twine twine Uganda Communication Commission, okay? Azahri mbaru tarigaru wekona office. Niwakshovora kurunye ichibuze ichibuze. Wagonza ishomavanda ware te buzo deyuntzakwagambro kutuara baga kutuara baga.
Weyale Paul abanda bakakuzo bakakuzo twina Nixon. Twina Jonas via mukama. Twina... Ah businje Amina. Abanti timteiro gamazina ganyu twina Stanle biaruhanga. Mujuni Ambrose. Tumuesige Nicholas tumuesige Nicholas. Ibrahim Bayo. Ainama zima Yoas. Jacqueline Tumushabi. This one works at Team Barara Regional Referral Hospital. Barbara. Charles Yamgisha. Regan Mohose. Natamba Everina. Kajubi Moses. Patrick. Dorin from Mast. Winfred. Francis Muherezah. Benson Tusinguire. Baker from Freedom Bookshop. Selaji Ntutumo. Bob Ashabahewa. Karungi Lidya. Leyla. Toriji Nastori. Kakongi Cornelia. And finally KKI. So tuan twendanti momanyante ibibuza biyo ne bi moabuza bitahire abamutu moatekama zina ganyu bati biyo ne bi kakuzu bitahire. Ah tugenda kubaka Cruise FM kutanika sahemwe. Ya mwevazo kuika saha ibidi mugitekeo Cruise FM. Ebikakuzu nubiu nubiu na habobuire tujakubanta wigarukamo ah kaidaku. So akasume kano lekatu serve deputy governor's representative, Mr. Philip Andrew Abulia to... To handle the closure and he will invite the vice chair person in Barara district. Who will also invite the residency commissioner to finally close. And after all that is done, we'll have a closing prayer led by sister Winfred Tugumisirize. And then we'll have the anthems, then group photo. Team Bank of Uganda is going to give you lunch coupons. The deputy governor has been kind enough to arrange lunch for us. Thank you so much deputy governor. And Team Bank of Uganda will give you a lunch coupon. And lunch will be served just in the main building. You go to the reception, then you'll enter that. The team from Bank of Uganda will be there to guide you. Ba jakubani baboleka okusavinga rekiamasana bay tona kugenda lunch coupon. Obutukwesa anthems rudi kuzina ebizina ebeshi ongre echeiha angane cha East Africa. Ah tujakubanza koleka abakuru banu babanse bagenda heru then hanyuma netu jakuratira then tuzena ha lunch. So deputy governor sir, allow me to invite you to handle the closure.
Thank you very much. On behalf... Oh, I had forgotten. Very important. People said I talked so much about treasury bills and treasury bonds. What's the process? You, if you have a bank in this, in your neighborhood, your bankers, you walk in and you ask them that you want to invest in treasury bills. Bobo ina bank, ogena mu bank, nobagamba you want to invest in treasury bills? Bagenda kugamba inti waro forms o ino kujuzam. Form zezo we muzijuzam. Odyakuwanga obula wu accounti edinga edimo Bank of Uganda inti wono obula anga treasury bills tuzijaku account yo. Entuziteka ku accounteno jetuku ma angafe. So that bogalowo accounteno mu bank eru cha asovolo kufunachi sente zo. So ogena mu bank yo bajakuwa form ojijuzem ziberanga form satu. Ekubuza enaga montu ovira wa overo moami. Otekako wembanvu demula move ange otekako next of kin. Normally abami batekako abachaala. Na ye abachaala normally... Kan komao. Mweyale nyo mweyale munonga. So on behalf of my team. And my team is everyone putting on white with this logo. I want to thank you very, very much. I've enjoyed your questions. I can see that you're interacting and I can tell you I am more than humbled for the reception. Please, when you are in Kampala, thank you. When you are in Kampala, just pass by. Bank of Uganda doesn't bite. We also have a library. It is being renovated. You can come and with your children mostly, they can see where the currency started. So I encourage you, don't get scared. And if you fail to see people, at least you ask for me. I'm there. You just say, I saw this, like he has remembered me. I saw this man called Philip. Lucky enough, I think I'm the only Philip in the bank. Yeah, I'm the only Philip in the bank. I can always help. If you're not sure, irango wait ya. Just go to the branches, get the number, we'll explain to you. Totya eh? Bank of Uganda teduma. So on behalf of our team, thank you very much. I hope we can get this reception again. But since here we are guests, we want to invite... Madame Juliet Nabakosa, the chair person Barara district. Madame, I'm very honored to be the one to invite you. Thank you. I hope you're the one going to give me my regard. I've been telling people about it. I've been telling people about it. Thank you very much. And after your remarks, I kindly, with your permission, request that you invite the RCC. Thank you very much.